All right, welcome everyone. Thank you. Back again to our meeting this evening. We started at actually five o'clock tonight with a presentation from the Planning Department and then we took a break to get some dinner and we are back again. So I'm gonna, since we're coming back to order, I'll ask the City Clerk to call the roll again.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Searsie.
Here.
Great. So I just wanted to bring people's attention to our agenda this evening. There are, I think there was one thing added. It is a resolution authorizing members of the council to sign on individually if they'd like to, to in a secret brief regarding FCC's December 2019 rules and policies related to human exposure, exposure to radio frequency. So I think that was the only thing that was changed and added to the agenda. And there are just a number of other things, updates that people can find on the city website. Looking to next week's meeting, we have a rather large voting session next week. We have the second reading of the Charter Amendment Resolution enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail. Our second reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. Our second reading ordinance setting forth the details of the 2020 election. We have a second reading ordinance amending the tree code. We have second reading ordinance approving FY budget number amendment number one. And second reading ordinance approving FY 21 stormwater budget amendment number one. We have an emergency ordinance regarding committee term extensions. We have a resolution modifying Resolution 2020-12 which suspended quasi judicial hearings. A resolution providing for appointments to the Tacoma Park Use Council. And a resolution providing for the city council summer recess. We also have two work sessions next week. One is an assessment of park quality accessibility in race. And then the second work session is a check in on our COVID-19 response. After that, the city council will be on recess until September 16th when we will pick up again our regular meetings. Now, before we dig into public comments, I'd like to turn it over to Kathleen O'Toole, our Tacoma Park poet laureate who we just reappointed and she has a poem for us this evening.
Thank you. I was a little bit confused last time and had prepared to share a poem with you last session when I was reappointed. But I wanted to agree to come back and do that in part because there's certainly a lot of roles that poetry can play in challenging times like these. And I opted not to go with a recent COVID poem because I think, to me, more pressing as a longtime community organizer are the ways in which we as community leaders and artists are being asked to interrogate our privilege and to reflect in the ways in which our own families of origin or communities have been complicit or resistant to undoing racism. And so I'm going to read a slightly older poem from my book, my recent book this far, in which I at least attempt to look at the ways in which the history of my, my own hometown Wilmington, Delaware and its racial history is really indicted. And so I'm going to read this poem called Among the Martyrs. And I don't think you need a lot of background except maybe to know that Wilmington, Delaware had the longest National Guard occupation in, after Dr. King's death, not because the riots were worse, but because the DuPont Company is located there. And the incident that I referred to at the beginning of the poem, you'll probably recognize from the movie Selma. Among the Martyrs. Jimmy Lee Jackson was 26 on February 18th, 1965, when a state trooper slammed him against the cigarette machine in a dark cafe where he and other voting rights marchers sought refuge. Where exactly was I that night, three days past my 13th birthday, when the streetlights went out in Marion, Alabama? Perhaps I was engrossed in history homework or dreaming of stealing a kiss with Peter backstage after the school play when Trooper Fowler fired the fatal shot, making Jimmy Lee a martyr on the road to Selma. Jimmy Lee Jackson was not among the martyrs or history we were studying in our classrooms full of white girls, daughters of working class Catholics, well protected in our corner of Wilmington, while black citizens and clergy from city churches set out to join the Selma campaign. Ms. Lillian, one of those saints would later teach me a chapter of Delaware history I'd missed, how the National Guard patrolled her streets in 68 so we could get to school, our fathers to work, and our suburbs rest in peace. Half a century later, an obituary, one James Bonard Fowler, Jimmy Lee's executioner, stirs up these histories. I see the ex-trooper finally served a measly six-month sentence in 2010 after he sought out a reporter to claim he killed the unnamed marcher in self-defense. In his story, I trace the contrails of white rage, careering from workplace assault to Vietnam ballot to heroin trafficking, for which he served more time than for killing Jimmy Lee. You'd think by now, after Charleston and Ferguson, after the litany of named victims, Trayvon and Michael, Freddie and Tamir, and we could add George and Brianna and others, we would have cornered this hate like you'd stalk a mountain lion menacing the city. When will we hear who is my neighbor are real? Unmask the parallel lives we've led and rewrite these histories, starting with why and why not? Thank you very much. Blessings on your deliberations and it's an honor to be a part of the shared leadership in Tacoma Park. Thanks.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you. Thank you so much for the poem this evening. We very much appreciate it. All right, we will now move on to public comments. I'll ask the City Clerk. First, we usually do public comments on voting items. Do we have Helen with us?
We do. She is here.
Okay, great. Helen, I think you wanted to speak on the tree canopy resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Helen Galband, I live in Ward 3 and I'm a member of the Committee on the Environment. I want to add my support to the committee's recommendation to set higher tree canopy goals than just no net loss. While I understand the situation that no net loss isn't the same as doing nothing, it's also a defeatist goal and it will be with us for the next decade or more. Linked to this is the scaled down commitment to tree replacement in the revised ordinance, which has also been commented on by other Committee on the Environment members and they've offered suggestions for improvement. I wholeheartedly agree that we should be incentivizing new tree planting, subsidizing it as much as possible and not excusing ourselves from that responsibility. The final word is, I don't want to be defined as part of the generation that thinks no net loss is good enough. And I think we can be better than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we had, that was it for public comments on voting items. Next, we had general public comments and we first had Linda Colka. Is she with us?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Here. And Jessie, did you give everybody the copy of the banner?
I'm going to share my screen so they can see it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's more important than looking at me. Okay. Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, which is located at the corner of Maple and Cedar Avenues, is committed to addressing racism in our community, country, and the world. We have an active, committed racial mindfulness committee and have displayed the Black Lives Matter sign on our church for the past four years. On July 16th, 2020, a dedication was held at the church for a new banner with the following quotation from the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Mayor Kate Stewart welcomed the small socially distanced group. We all had masks on too, and a short service followed. Thanks to Ward 3 residents Roger Griffiths, Donna Wheating, and their son Mateo for donating and hanging the banner and to Ward 1 resident Wendy Lukart for organizing the event. Thank you very much. And the poem obviously is very timely and relevant to what we're trying to do at our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And it was an honor to be part of the hanging of the sign and for everyone coming out that evening. Let's see. Next, we have Susan Miller.
Hi. You hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Okay. Sue Miller, Ward 3. As predicted, the developer did submit revised junction plans to the county this week and the deadline clock is now ticking on this plan for our public land at the junction. The city posted a dead-end link to the plans. If you want to actually see the plans, Community Vision sent out correct links yesterday to over a thousand residents who'd been waiting to see them. The view from Columbia and Poplar, a view we'd been asking to see for over a year, is appalling. It looks like an office park, which in fact is what it is. Since the mayor declined to put the topic on the schedule, I would appreciate hearing from each council member tonight, whether you had seen these plans before this week or whether you've seen them at all. And I would appreciate any thoughts you have tonight before you head into your break on why, in a pandemic recession, we are proceeding with offices and upscale retail and restaurants on this public land. The city manager stated in a recent blog her opinion that it's just too difficult or too expensive to create a better plan. But to be very frank, that manager does not live here and won't be on staff to suffer the traffic consequences or the loss of the co-op. So I want to ask each of you as residents, as elected officials, if you share her opinion. It is time to pull the plug on this misbegotten plan. If you do, you will immediately start doubling the money we make on the lot because right now the co-op is paying the developer to rent it and the developer is paying you half what they're making off of it. We have heard that the city is too busy to address this issue. But as we head into election season for a huge constituency, there is no more important local election issue. A pro forma approval by the city, days or weeks before the planning board vote, is going to leave a 99-year legacy of anger and tears as we snarl the traffic at the junction and risk good union jobs at our grocery store for the sake of an ugly office park. Instead, there is still time to come together now and create a better plan. Let's do it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we have Megan Scribner.
Hi. My name is Megan Scribner and I live on Willow Avenue in Ward 1, not where you see me. Sometimes well-intentioned people get a good idea and decide to move forward with modest plans or models. As they go along, people raise suggestions that are added on and others come up with obstacles that need to be dealt with. And before you know it, a reasonable idea has morphed into a project that goes way beyond the purpose goals and especially the budget of the original plan. Rather than checking in to see if the new plan addresses the original needs and whether these additions and costs are really warranted, the people hire an architect to design the newly envisioned project. The architect's design is based on the expanded notion of the plan and we end up with a costly, overlarge extravagant design that does not fit the needs, the space, the budget, or the capacity the community to take on. I believe that's what happened with the library. Now, rather than going back to carefully, to carefully review the original plan and see if we can truly can afford or indeed even need everything that is in the new design, especially given the impact of COVID-19 on our individual and community funds. We are moving forward with a Frankenstein's monster of a plan that swallows all the green space, feels very grand and out of sync with the community center, and is more reminiscent of the Silver Spring Library, which is the least book-friendly, like least book-friendly library I've ever been in. Going back to reconsider the efficacy of this design and what we truly need in a library in a city of 17,000 on a small space of land is not a waste of money. In fact, it is the kind of reasonable and wise measure that any of us would do if we were faced with this kind of design cost overrun in our own homes. You owe it to us as stewards of our land, our money, and our community needs to do the same. Please take the time to ask, how much space do we really need for this library? How many added features do we need? Wouldn't some of the features be better off in another space such as New Hampshire Avenue, Rett Center? How many offices do we really need? Are there ways that we can use the spaces in the community center for some of these? Why is the design so in sync with the community center, in fact with all of Tacoma Park? Why does it eliminate all the green space and the beautiful trees? I walked by there just the other day and they're huge. They're gorgeous. We need these trees. Why so much glass? What happened to your commitment to making sure developments fit with climate change? How can you possibly justify a budget that is spiraling out of control, going from 3.2 to something like 10.4 million, which we all know always goes up once buildings are underway? And in a time of COVID-19, when we have no idea what our fiscal capacity will look like in the years ahead, with this development and with the Tacoma Junction development, it's, it doesn't make sense to just keep moving forward. It's fiscally responsible to go back and review where you are, whether it really fits what the needs are at the time, the space, and our capacity to.
Thank you very much. All right, those are all our public comments for this evening. Next, I'll turn to council comments. Are there any comments by the city council? Anyone want to raise their hands? Or we got a big schedule, so big agenda. So if no one wants to comment, I'm moving on. Okay, Councilwoman Searsie.
Sorry, it just took me a while to figure out how to raise my hand. All right, well, good evening, everyone. A couple of really quick updates. First, I want to just let people know that the Tacoma Langley Crowes Road Development Authority, or the CDA, has posted and placed hand sanitation dispensers throughout the Crowes Road area. So again, the goal is to really try to encourage people to shop, but to be safe while doing it. So I just want to let folks know, as you're walking in some of the plazas, you may see some hand sanitation stations. So we're excited about that, in addition to all of the work that Samira is doing on the healthy business initiatives. So signage in terms of wearing masks and things like that are really going to have a large impact for our area. Want to remind folks who are engaged on the Hillwood Manor Playground to please, renovation, to please go on the website, the county website for the playground and answer the survey by August the 2nd. So just want to remind folks again to do that. And I think, I'm just blanking on the last thing, but I think that's all I have. So thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
There we go. Hi, everybody. So some local business and some regional business, very quickly. So my last in a series of issue sessions is next Tuesday night on climate issues. We, we did have a police discussion last night, which was really useful. Speaking of police, the county passed a bill to set up a task force to look at mental health crisis services in the county and how they interact with, with police visits. And I'm hoping that we can be involved in that now that it's just passed. I think that's really exciting. Mary Jane Maturi came to council last week and mentioned the bill. So that's the bill we're talking about here. It did pass. On the regional front, the Council of Governments Climate and Energy Group met today. And I bring this up because several very interesting and significant things were presented. I will send them around to council and I'll have them in my newsletter later this week. Washington Gas presented a plan for how they are going to meet the city of, the District of Columbia's net neutrality goals. So for a gas company to be talking about renewable natural gas and defossilizing and electrifying, that was pretty interesting. And it, it shows what some companies are thinking who actually sell fossil fuels. So I'll pass that around. It was not without controversy, I must say. And the, the Council of Governments is in the process of, of revising the trends and forecasts for greenhouse gas emissions and how close or not the region is to meeting its targets. And we'll be proposing some revised climate goals in the long run. This is especially for the mayor, who I believe is on the board, that'll be coming forward to you at some point. So for, for all of these things, I'll, I'll send around the, the presentations and you can look at the details. There was a, there's a whole section in the analysis about transportation that Casey in particular might find interesting. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. So I just want to start off on a lightheaded note tonight. I got some razzing after the, the last meeting because apparently I had a Washington DC poster in my background. So I thought I would do Tacoma Park tonight.
I'm taking a screenshot of this.
On, on a serious note, I have a couple of items to update on. The first is, I want to give a big shout out and thank you to the co-op for recently, they've been doing a lot to assist with food access in the community, but more recently, they provided a lot of help to a group, Sanctuary DMV, that is working with, to provide food assistance to immigrant families that don't have assistance through government benefits. And the group was looking for a staging place to be able to park their vehicles and just move around some of their food items so they could deliver them. And the co-op very immediately offered to provide space through the parking lot. And also, after that, there was an issue as well where they needed to purchase some food and the co-op was extremely helpful with this. So I just wanted to really give a big shout out to the co-op and a thank you for being so involved in these initiatives and efforts. And a couple of other announcements, tomorrow evening at 8:00 PM, I will be meeting with anyone who is interested from the Wacko neighborhood area to talk about traffic calming. There are a number of people who've contacted me with an interest in exploring traffic calming measures that can be taken there and we'll have to sort of an initial brainstorming opportunity for that. Ms. Miller commented earlier, I just wanted to, to note, I had not seen the plans for the updated junction project prior to the submission to the county. And I am still working my way through the document like I'm sure others are as well. I'm sure many people have seen that MCPS has decided to go to an all-virtual environment for classes in the fall. And this, of course, I think is, is the right decision in terms of providing for safety for families and for teachers. But this does create an additional struggle for parents in the community and particularly for parents who are essential workers, for parents who've lost jobs, might be looking for jobs, and who face food insecurity. And everyone obviously is concerned about children's well-being and future and education. So I'm hoping as we move forward and figure out what the next steps are, the city can look for opportunities to be able to step in where possible and provide some assistance, particularly to families that are struggling the most and really need some additional services and assistance. And then finally, a couple of updates from the Transportation Planning Board meeting today. This was an extremely packed meeting and we did a lot during the meeting. We don't have a meeting in August, so this was our last meeting before the August break. I mentioned earlier during our meeting with Montgomery County Planning Staff that the board approved a list of 49 transit access focus areas. And then that includes the Tacoma Langley Transit Center. This is a list that was pared down from 208 locations in the region that have access to high-capacity transit. And of those, 49 were chosen, including the Langley, Tacoma Langley Transit Center. And that should hopefully enable us to advocate even more for improving pedestrian and bike access to the station there. We also adopted an equity and anti-racism resolution, which mirrored the Council of Governments' overall resolution that was adopted recently. Other bit of good news, the awards were made for the Maryland TA Set Aside Grant Program and Tacoma Park's application for a bike project was approved and will receive $49,000 for a project improving access to five local schools here. So that should be a great opportunity for our community. We also adopted the national, an updated National Capitol Trail Network revised map. And finally, the board adopted a resolution calling on all jurisdictions to take actions. And we included a list that had been based on a lot of research to adopt actions that would improve safety, so reducing fatalities and serious injuries through traffic crashes. I think the, the resolution overall is, is really great and will move us forward in a really positive direction. I was actually the only person who ended up voting against it, however, because it does contain a, an area of concern to me, which was advocacy for a adoption in Virginia, since Maryland and DC already have it, of a primary seatbelt law, which would enable police to pull people over for not wearing their seatbelts. And I felt strongly. And I felt strongly that there are a lot of, um, there's a lot of evidence showing racial profiling and dangers to black and brown residents if they are pulled over by police. So I felt in this case, it was appropriate to vote against the resolution. Although, for the most part, the resolution um, has some very good recommendations and I think will really move, move the needle on safety in the region overall. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank the poet laureate. I appreciate uh, the poem that she read to us. Uh, it's good that we keep Black Lives Matter in front of us. It is a critical issue for not just Tacoma Park, DMV, but the country. Uh, I want to go on record and say that um, I have not seen the plans that Ms. Miller uh, mentioned. And I do support some of the questions that she brought forward. I also want to say that I thought Ms. Scribner's comments uh, were excellent. During the library, I've always felt that um, we are spending a lot of money uh, for a community who only has a budget of thirty-three million dollars. I would uh, like to bring to everyone's attention the incredible work that Adventist Community Services uh, is doing. Uh, I recently saw an email uh, that, that described uh, their metrics for food distribution, diaper distribution. Mind-blowing. Uh, if you get a chance, take a, take a minute and read it. Also, if you have extra resource, resources, please, donate it to Adventist Community's uh, Services and also um, to uh, Small Things Matter. These, these groups are doing yeoman work uh, during this uh, horrible economic downturn that many of our residents are suffering. And then finally, uh, I had uh, an opportunity to participate in the Serve and Protect Teaching uh, that was hosted by our own um, Reverend Dr. Gil Fisher Stewart, who is the pastor for our police department. It was an incredible, I believe it was four hours. Councilmember Kostic was also uh, part of this uh, Zoom teaching. Uh, one thing that I, I would say that uh, really caught my attention is um, uh, Ms. Stewart was able to tell the truth. She did not uh, you know, talk about all these issues and, and, and ways that don't get at the heart of the problem when it comes to policing in this country. Uh, so if it's offered again, I would stress, all residents, participate. Ms. Stewart is going to make um, the teaching available uh, so I can distribute it and, and Ms. Kostic will also have an opportunity. So I will send it out to residents, but it was fantastic. And it, it, it made, I think, a lot of people uncomfortable. That's where people should be when it comes to policing. But policing is just part of the problem. I was also on a call with um, the real councils. Uh, the National League of Cities Real Council. And there were many jurisdictions around the country that just want to focus, focus, focus on policing when it comes to the Black Lives Matter issue. But policing is just a small, small part of what is going on. Why people are demonstrating, uh, why black and brown communities uh, like their voices are not being heard. So uh, thank you very much.
I just want to echo that the training was really amazing. And um, the next time it's, it's offered, uh, residents and other council members should consider, sit now.
Great. Um, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Just had a few things that I wanted to mention. One, um, I also have a um, Zoom uh, community meeting coming up on uh, next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth at seven PM. This is in, in effect, a replacement for office hours in its own way because those are obviously unavailable during the pandemic. And my, my colleague, uh, Councilmember DeBau mentioned that hers is focused on a specific topic. This one is open-ended. That's not better or worse, it's just how, how it is. So any issue is fine. I'll be sending out separately the um, credentials to, to log in and participate. Secondly, I wanted to ask, um, and maybe um, the city manager can address this later, or if there's information right now. I'm not sure if um, uh, Public Works Director Darryl Braithwaite is uh, on this uh, in the meeting now or not. But um, there was an issue relating to recycling this week. And um, I believe, at least uh, for a day or so, we didn't have access to our usual recycling uh, place in Prince George's County. And so the uh, residents were surprised to see the recycling materials just being thrown in by the rest of the uh, refuse. And I believe that's now been addressed, at least for now. And we're back again using the uh, Prince George's site. But it would be helpful to have an update on that, just to let people know what the situation is. And obviously, if that happens again, it would be helpful, if it's possible to do so, to notify people in advance so that they can keep their recycling for another week, if that's what they choose to do. So having an update on that would be helpful and, including understanding whether there's some question as to whether we'll be able to continue using the site in the future. That would obviously be a challenging uh, situation for us to have to deal with. Two other things, um, it was great to hear about the new banner that's being hung, that has been hung at the Presbyterian Church. They've always had really inspirational and, and moving and, and important uh, statements being either hung from the building itself or featured out front. So I've been passing by them for, for decades and it's great to see that they've got a new one and I'm hoping to go take a look at that soon. And then um, lastly, just on the um, Tacoma Junction project, since it was mentioned, I hadn't seen uh, the plans in advance and I, and I hope to get a chance to look at them shortly. Um, I would mention, for anybody who's watching, we did have this earlier segment of our meeting today from five to six-thirty, which included a presentation on several different topics connected to, or, or from people who are part of the uh, Montgomery County Planning Office. And they did talk a little bit about the timeline for uh, going forward with the Tacoma Junction project. And it maybe was, looking back at the video for, for those who uh, didn't see it, it seemed as if the staff was saying that the earliest it, the project would come before, in a formal way, before the County Planning Office was October or later. And there's a lot of uncertainties around the scheduling, but uh, the, uh, they did indicate that they're looking through the submission now and they're not meeting in August. And they didn't believe that there would be any opportunity for them to consider it formally in September. And so the timeframe is uh, several months and more down the road. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have seen the uh, NDC plan before its submission and have not read it now. But I will. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I have a couple of uh, announcements tonight. First, I want to um, just do a shout out and thank um, Ian Chamberlain and Darryl Braithwaite uh, in our Public Works Department for um, providing water and being on top of the um, WSSC shutdowns. They were scheduled um, to do the, kind of some final hookups on the work that's going on on Flower Avenue. But um, to not have water um, in the last couple of days, um, the hottest days we've experienced. Um, and to kind of make sure and go above and beyond, um, I just really appreciate them um, doing what they did um, the last couple of days. The other thing I want to mention is um, our media specialist Donna Wright is doing an amazing job pushing the census. Everyone, make sure you're counted. Donna is, um, if you haven't checked out our social media on um, Twitter and Facebook, there's a lot of great um, videos and other things regarding the census. Take your time to look at them and please um, remind people in the community to fill out the census. It's, it's incredibly important. Let's see, the other thing I, I wanted to mention is um, Grace Swigens um, told us today that we have a um, home stretch down payment assistant recipient. And this is the fifth person that we've been able to help um, in just the last couple of years, move from renting to home ownership um, in the city. Um, and this is the first time we've had it as a uh, a tenant opportunity to purchase. So that's one of the um, laws that we have in Tacoma Park. And it's super exciting that um, this person has been able to stay in our city and purchase their home. Councilmember Smith talked about the real council this week. I was also on that meeting. I, I co-chair the real council for NLC. And it was, as Councilmember Smith mentioned, um, we had a, a discussion. A lot of folks were focused on um, policing efforts. Um, and it was a very interesting conversation, also about reparations. Um, one of the things that the real council has been looking at is pushing the National League of Cities to support the federal legislation that's been introduced um, in the House and in the Senate to form a committee to look at reparations. Um, and that, hopefully that work will continue as the real council pushes all of the National League of Cities to look at uh, racial equity issues. And hopefully, we can move that issue forward. Let's see, um, oh, the other thing I'm spending a lot of evenings um, doing is meeting with each of our committees um, and talking to them about the, the work that we've been doing to rethink um, our committees and how to make pro, the process of applying and participating committees one that is um, both beneficial to the people who participate as well as the city council. And in addition, um, given the numbers that we saw from the survey and we know anecdotally who is serving on our committees, to really look at ways that we can make our committees much more reflective of our community overall. So that's what I'm doing many evenings. It's actually great uh, meeting with all the committees. There are lots of folks I didn't know actually served on our committees. So it's, it's been a, a great opportunity to meet with them. And let's see, I think, um, oh, to answer Ms. Miller's question, I had not seen um, the NDC application. And um, as Councilmember Kovar mentioned, we had an excellent presentation prior to this where he asked a question about the process. I know the city manager has also gone to review that. And during the um, presentation, um, Elza from the Housing Department stated that this would not go before the planning board for a vote until the city council has a chance to look at it and vote on it. It just won't happen. So um, we just want to make sure that everyone um, understands the process moving forward. With this, there's a lot to go through. And that is one of the reasons um, why we want to have the opportunity to have the planning department do their job, have our city staff do their job, and to have our city council do their due diligence while we're on recess and in early September, to really look at the plans and look at how it matches up with the resolution we passed two years ago and make sure that we're doing our due diligence on this. And that is what we'll do. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thanks very much. I have a number of comments. The first one I want to do, I noticed that um, in DC uh, Mayor Bowser is um, encouraging and requiring more mask-wearing in DC. My city manager comments tonight start off with a thing that says, "Wear a mask." It's not new information. It's not exciting. It can be a fashion statement or not. It just needs to be a habit. It's simply this, "Wear a mask over your nose and mouth when you are near others." Thank you. Uh, it isn't, uh, you know, we're getting into a habit and that's the right thing to do. We're going to be in this for the long haul and it's how we respect others. Let's see, um, one of the things that we had was a um, a second pop-up COVID testing sponsored by the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. And that was uh, done on July sixteenth. We had had a previous one that had just over four hundred people. This one tested six hundred and twelve people. Um, and it uh, was only over the course of four hours. It was two hundred tests higher than we expected, but the county had uh, decided to allow walk-ins in addition to those who had scheduled appointments. Because the county wants to do more testing and uh, and wants to do this, this higher pace, they want to find a larger space than the rec center. So we're working with them to try to find a way that there's a bigger parking lot, that there's a bigger space uh, so that they can do that kind of testing. And um, so Jessica Clark, our Deputy City Manager, is doing a great job working with the county. But it's also, every time, we're kind of like the pilot. So that anytime they've got a new option to test out, they, "Let's try it on Tacoma Park." And it, and it, a little bit tough. Um, just a, a small other note uh, that is uh, COVID-nineteen related. This has to do with the Public Information Act Status Report. We have two uh, Public Information Act requests that are delayed longer than the normal thirty-day period because of the um, necessities related to the pandemic. One is related to a request from the Domer and Flower Neighborhood Association. And the other is uh, a request for um, information on the Domestic Partnership Registry. Those are things that we're not able to get to um, in the way that is being requested right away. I wanted to speak a moment about um, first of all, city staff are really, really busy. But even though we're in the midst of a pandemic and we have more work on our plates than ever before, one effort has continued and that's the work of challenging ourselves to implement the council's goals of race equity into every aspect of our work. And you've heard some of that on our earlier presentation by Montgomery County Planning. We've heard it from the Transportation Planning Board and COG and, and the real council. We have a cohort of senior staff um, in a program related to, in, with GARE, Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And they are doing uh, studying and they're also leading our staff to find a way to challenge us to be, um, have better systems in our government. Their study group is also looking at the city's boards, commissions, and committees as part of their project. Race equity, I think, is easier to think of as something for other people. And it means, but it means more. It means confronting and dismantling white entitlement and systematic and institutional racism for the greater good and prosperity for everyone. And that's really hard work. It's not just something we should do, but something that we must do to remain viable in our diverse and, and wonderful community. For this reason, I wanted to let folks know that um, one of the things that we have on our agenda items each week is a race equity consideration uh, box uh, on the council's cover page for each item. I'm going to be in, going forward, looking at that also to how do we confront and dismantle elements that perpetuate white entitlement and system, and institutional racism? When I look at those things, and I think that will help us provide more information to you as you're going through the agenda items. We still don't have data for robust impact analyses, but I think this will help us get to more usable information as you make your decisions on agenda items. And I, I, you know, I just want to mention that um, you know, we're, we're doing all these things and then we're having these really hard discussions. And I appreciate my staff for probing and challenging and, and making sure that as we're making these tough decisions, we're keeping that as a, as a focal point. On a completely different note, uh, Councilmember Kovar mentioned uh, an issue with recycling. So due to overcapacity, the Prince George's County Recycling Facility informed us a few days ago that they would um, not be accepting Tacoma Park single-stream recycling temporarily beginning tomorrow, July twenty-third. Um, we were searching for an alternate way to handle our recycling. Then we found out, actually, it was going to be cut, it was cut off today. So completely caught us by surprise. Uh, we did combine today, the recycling and the trash on the same trucks. Uh, we are going back to the Prince George's County Recycling Facility. So um, it should just have been that one day, you know, issue. One of the things that people should appreciate is that the recycling centers in this region all have their own different kinds of rules. And the Prince George's County Facility accepts the uh, single-stream recycling. Montgomery County has to have separate uh, items. Montgomery County has to have separate items. Waste management will not accept glass. And so trying to figure out how do we handle these things is a hard job. I want to give kudos to Gerald Braithwaite, our Director of Public Works. It has been a horrible couple of days trying to figure out what to do with the reset, this temporary stoppage of recycling at the public work, at the facility in Prince George's County. I'm glad it's, it's worked out, but we've had this problem before. And so I think it is something that will be an ongoing discussion.
Could I ask one question about that? So I assume even though for now we're back on and based on what you just said, we could encounter this in the future. So I mean, is this something that we should at some point take a deeper look into just to avoid a situation where potentially the Prince George's site closes again, but it's more of a long-term closure and?
Yeah, so we've done that before. I think we're going to, we're going to continue to look at that. But that is something that has, has been a, a, a topic of discussion and study by the Director of Public Works.
So again, right now, going forward for the immediate future, there's no change. There was a couple of days where there was a problem, but now. So starting tomorrow, I should put my recycling out because it will get picked up as recycling. I shouldn't hold it back till next week or something.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay.
As the mayor mentioned earlier, we've, we're working with WSSC about their nighttime shutdown on Long Flower Avenue and other portions of Ward Five related to the Flower Avenue water main installation and making sure that people have water. The shutdown will start tomorrow evening around 9:00 PM and could last until 5:00 AM on, on Friday morning. It is a problem in a, in a hot time for this to happen. And water has been made available and we can continue to get water available if there's any problem. It's a pain, but the Flower Avenue project is really close to finishing. And this is just a wonderful step. So that's the positive part here.
I would just like to say thank you to WSSC for stepping up, providing potable water to residents. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll pass the word along. As the mayor also mentioned, we have our new home stretch program recipient. We're happy to congratulate Mr. Edwin Andino. He'll be purchasing his Lee Avenue condominium home tomorrow using both the city's tenant opportunity to purchase law and the city's home stretch down payment assistance program. And I just wanted to note that we're delighted to see both of these programs being used exactly as they are envisioned. And we welcome Mr. Andino to a home in Tacoma Park that he gets to own. One thing I have included in my city manager comments is a copy of the report of the Commemoration Commission related to the names of Jackson Boyd Park, Hefner Park, the streets that are named after various generals from the Civil War, and also regarding commemorative plaques. And so the text of that report is at the end of my city manager comments, which are always posted on the website and in the Tacoma Insider. Now I'd like to spend a few minutes and talk about the Tacoma Junction project because it's kind of back up on people's wavelengths. And I've had a number of questions about what the process is. So the city's development partner, Neighborhood Development Company, has submitted additional information for review by the Montgomery County Development Review Committee, which is called the DRC, regarding the Tacoma Junction project. The revised application will need to be reviewed by the various agencies that make up the DRC to see that the request to changes or additional information has been provided. I've been told it generally takes a couple of weeks to do that review. If more information is needed by them, that information will be requested. The plans are posted on the Montgomery County Development Activity Information Center. I'll double check to make sure that this link is correct. I don't want any incorrect information out. And note that the plans will continue to change on an iterative basis as, as Elza Heisel McCoy mentioned even earlier this evening. I will also note that some of the drawings are to show certain aspects only and so don't include trees or other features that would also be on the site. So one of the things I personally have not also looked at these plans because I like to make sure that the development review team does it work. I don't want to be spending my time on something that's not going to be used, is not going to, is going to change. And so I just give that word of caution that if you're looking at any of those drawings or information, that it could change and you'd need to monitor it. If the information submitted is found to meet the city, the county's development review requirements, the review of the plan, review of the plans moves to the next steps. And that involves detailed city staff technical review and the setting of future dates for the Tacoma Park City Council and Montgomery County Planning Board consideration. It will likely be in the fall before the schedule's even set. Pursuant to the Development Review Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Tacoma Park and the Montgomery County Planning Board, the project will come to the Tacoma Park City Council for review and adoption of a resolution expressing the council's position on the site plan, which is then submitted to the planning board as part of its consideration of the project. The Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission had approved the earlier draft massing and design plans for the planning board review. And if the plans are approved eventually by the planning board, the Historic Preservation Commission will then consider the revised plans for historic area work permit. Steps regarding trees, while discussed throughout the project, will really only occur near the end of the approval process. And that's in the city of Tacoma Park. Years of public discussion, careful crafting of legal language, careful crafting of the council resolution text and a long development review process have all taken place so far on the Tacoma Junction project. When the county's staff review of the Tacoma Junction Project Site Plan is completed, city staff will review the revised site plan from a professional planning and engineering perspective as well as to assess how the provisions, how the site plan adheres to the provisions detailed in the 12-page City Council Resolution Number 2018-41 and the lengthy over 80-page Development Agreement and the ground lease signed between the City of Tacoma Park and the Neighborhood Development Company. This analysis will be part of the information the city council considers as it prepares a resolution on the site plan for the planning board. And it is something that I would urge residents to go back and review the resolution as they're looking at these various items. Like to note that recently there's been a revised, revived round of comments from people. Been a number of comments from people believing that the Tacoma Park, the Tacoma Junction project will harm the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op grocery store. This claim has little basis. The Development Agreement and the ground lease signed between the City of Tacoma Park and Neighborhood Development Company provide remarkable protections and special treatments for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. The city strongly supports the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op as a local business and it has put in strong measures to protect the co-op during construction and when receiving deliveries and also with trash. The co-op is more likely to be harmed if the project does not move forward as these protections may not be able to be accommodated with alternate uses or ownership of the land, including ownership by the co-op itself. For these reasons, the city had taken these, taken these strong steps to define special protections for the co-op in the development agreement for this project. There have also been claims that the building on this infill site will cause gentrification. This project does not displace any residents. Many of the businesses in the junction own their own property, so business lease rates are less likely to be affected. And it provides space for the kinds of nonprofits, businesses and activities that Tacoma Park has indicated it wants. Specificity of the uses the community wants and does not want is in the Development Agreement and ground lease, and it's also in Resolution 2018-41. And there's a number of whereas clauses that go to that. Which actual nonprofits and businesses may occupy the spaces cannot be finalized until it's known that the project is moving forward and that the 10, and that the timeline for the project is clear. The project does need to be profitable, which is why the city partnered with a successful local development company on the project. There've also been some surprising statements that the project is contrary to the race equity goals of the city of Tacoma Park. This project, which is a city partnership with a black-owned company, is designed to bolster the economic base of the city and to ease the property tax impacts on the city's homeowners. This is particularly needed because the city provides substantial services and programs to residents, which is a costly commitment. As we look to really working on race equity initiatives and long-term economic self-sufficiency of people of color, we need to support ownership of property, homes and businesses by people of color and work to ensure our programs and services can continue. One statement that we have heard is that opposing the Tacoma Junction project, just lost some space, is a race equity matter because most of the employees of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op Grocery Store are people of color. And if the Tacoma Park Co-op, Silver Spring Co-op is hurt, their livelihoods will be hurt. As has been noted, the city is committed to not hurting the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op Grocery Store, and that is the reason for the very strong provisions of the Development Agreement. We, as the city government, also put strong efforts into protecting jobs in our community. All 13 grocery stores in the city of Tacoma Park have employees who are people of color and most of the stores are owned by people of color. To help support our local economy while helping further race equity in our community, I encourage residents, particularly white residents of Tacoma Park, to support all of our grocery stores, to help them thrive and to keep their staffs employed. Please shop at Megamart, Aldi's, Red Apple, Caribbean Market, or any of the Halal Meat Markets or Indian or Ethiopian Food Stores, as well as the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. The success of all of these businesses is critical to Tacoma Park's long-term financial health and to our long-term race equity goals. As mentioned before, years of discussion, careful crafting of legal language and council resolution text and a long development review process have taken place so far on the Tacoma Junction project. The Historic Preservation Commission supports the overall design and massing of the project. And the project will need to come back to the city council before going to the planning board to review how the revised plans meet the specifications provided by the council in Resolution 2018-41. While it still will take a while, a number of months or longer, I look forward to seeing the city take an ugly patch of asphalt and transform it to something that is of greater use and of greater financial and an environmental benefit for the whole community while protecting the adjacent businesses and neighborhood. I look forward to, after the county has finished this development review process, reviewing all the plans. And then we will go through a very tedious review to make sure that the plans meet our planning and engineering standards and the standards that have been identified by the council in the council's resolution, the Development Agreement and the ground lease. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Um, all right. So seeing no hands, we will move on to our agenda.
Mayor, could I just ask you a quick question? I, I wanted to follow up on the, the PIA requests. It's, it sounds like one of them is the one that was outstanding still back in, I guess, May or early June when we looked at this. Um, is there a possibility of moving forward on that? It seems like we're getting, getting down the line a little bit.
I, I know, I will have to find out about that. I'm not sure the exact, I'm not sure what the exact holdup is on that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, we good, all right. And moving on then, I think too many things opened tonight. Sorry, hold on one sec. We'll move on to our voting session. The first item we have is the First Reading Ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail. We had a work session on this last week. The only changes that are in the document from last week are highlighted in what was posted. If you, if my colleagues look on page four, lines 40 and 41, you'll see mail-in ballots for an election must be mailed or distributed no more than 30 days and no less than 15 days prior to the election. 30 days was also inserted in line 46. And I will, and then on page six of eight, we have on line 12. This talks about having mail-in ballots shall be tabulated only if it is received via mail by the city clerk before five o'clock in the afternoon on the fourth business day after the election. I believe those are all the changes on the ordinance that was posted based on our conversations last week. I think we do have some changes that we'll consider after I ask for someone to move the ordinance. Will someone, Councilmember DeBala, did you have a question?
Yes, but I also would like to move the ordinance.
Okay, so you moved the ordinance and now you get to ask the first question.
Oh, thank you. Do we need a second?
Oh, yeah, who wants a second? Thank you. Oh my gosh, Councilmember Kovar, it's going to be a long night. All right, now you get to ask a question.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, when the ballots are mailed, 30 days to 15 days before the election, election in this context means election day or election in this context means the first day of early voting for the general election that the state will be running?
Councilmember DeBala, it means election day.
Okay, so 30 to 15 days before election day.
Yes.
And remind me, I lied, I have two questions. Remind me what the plan is? I know you told us last week, but tell us again. If somebody gets a ballot, they lose it, the cat eats it, whatever, and they need another one quickly, how will that work with the city?
So there'll be several options, but that they can request a replacement. And if there is not time to mail the replacement, we can deliver it by a secure website where they can download the ballot and print it and bring it or if there's time, mail it in.
You have more faith in the mail than I do right now.
Yeah, I know. I, I don't really.
Which is why I'm asking the question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Kostick. Thank you. I had a question about the absentee ballot section 52020. I know, thank you to Mr. Cornbrooks for providing some additional information over email. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it. Can you explain, I, I was confused about why we would be getting rid of the ability to request an absentee ballot seven days prior to the election. And similar to, I think, Mr. Bala's question, how, how would it work if you are getting an absentee ballot? And, and obviously it's a little confusing because there are the mail-in ballots and then there are the absentee ballots. But for absentee ballots, what is the process if someone needs them seven days before, within that seven-day range before the election?
So within that seven-day period, again, there's the option to have it delivered electronically to the voter so that they can mark and return the ballot. There's also the option to physically come and if they're in the, in the vicinity to come and pick up the ballot and just mark it and leave it. So there, there are details that are going to have to be figured out in terms of what kind of presence we're going to have at the community center or where else, wherever else we may be. So those, that's not figured out yet. But the, the idea is that when you get to that seven-day point, there is no time to mail a ballot out to a voter and have the ballot come back. And that's the reason for the seven days.
Okay, so they'd essentially be following the same process as someone who lost their ballot.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, yes.
All right. In, in other words, it'll either be a, right, it'll be an affidavit saying they lost it or it'll be a request for, kind of a last-minute request for an absentee ballot.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. The, the-
The the specific timeframes have been added, so I'm just working through that. It does seem to say that in addition to the ballot itself, that there will be a separate mailing, telling people about it. Am I, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
So that will get sent out and then subsequent to that, the actual ballot will be sent out.
Right, we actually anticipate three notices, one. A notice to every household in the city that says there's an election, here's how it's gonna work. Then a mailing to all registered voters that says your ballot is coming, watch for it and return it. And then the third mailing would be the ballot itself.
Okay, and so. Other than those three mailings, and I realize this wouldn't be in the resolution, but there's going to be other. Publicity and. Marketing for the idea of this, I assume, because, you know, one of the challenges will be. If the rest of the voting in Maryland is apparently being done. The old fashioned way or people have to ask for ballots specifically. Many people may not realize. What's happening, right? And so. And we can all certainly talk about it, but people don't always read the things that we send out for understandable reasons, so. Can you talk a little bit about? Other plans that. Try to promote it and expand, explain that it's taking place and so on.
Sure, well, one thing I should say that Irma and I meet weekly with Donna. To plan for publicity for the election, so that's a weekly meeting that we're we're having to. And and also when the Board of Elections meets, we're consulting with them, and so we're all working together. To develop a good plan for outreach. The city guide that will come out in September will have election information again. The lot, you may recall, the last city guide provided information about the election we thought we were gonna have before the pandemic. The city guide will give the facts about the the new mail in voting election. Finally, we have the city newsletter, of course, which will contain information, then. We'll be using, again, working with Donna, the website, social media. Bus stop, bus shelter ads, sort of doing a full court press, similar to what's been done with the census. To get the word out.
One of the things that worries me in general and does in this case also is. What we'll do with languages other than English and if you can talk a little bit about that as well.
Sure, so everything. Everything will be in English and Spanish. I know that's not sufficient, but that's that's one thing, so. All the election, the mailings and so on, but we also plan to include French and Mharic to the extent that we can, so. We will do that. I don't have a formal plan for exactly how it's gonna work, but. There's every, we have every intention of making information as available as possible in in the four. Main languages of Tacoma Park.
And so. And I hope you'll continue to keep us advised about all of those steps as we go along. The one other thing, and Councilmember DeBala was asking about early voting, so. We're not really having early voting, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, given the Board of Elections decision was to have a mail in election to the extent that we can. And. My understanding was that the council agreed with that, so we're gonna do what we can. With as little personal contact as possible, so I am anticipating some kind of presence. At the rec center, at the community center, I I'm not exactly sure, and and we have to plan it and I I need to have a. A meeting with the county election director as well to discuss this. We had planned to be at the Silver Spring Civic Building for early voting. But at this point, they're not even sure, and this is the Silver Spring Civic Building, if they want us there, they they're not really open. For business and and so we're struggling a bit with how how this is all gonna work, but we are not planning. For the full. Every precinct, every early voting hour type election that was anticipated originally.
So what's on the calendar for the for the the election calendar for the city that talks about early voting? Is that either no longer operative or is that just for the non-local elections that are taking?
That is, that is on the calendar, it's in italics, that is the Montgomery County schedule. So those are their early voting days.
So the only other thing I'll mention that worries me just a little bit is it says that the ballots can be mailed out. No more than thirty and no less than fifteen days in advance, I think. If they're mailed out fifteen days in advance.
That's too close.
I think so, because the way the mail's been going lately, a number of residents have contacted me recently. And, you know, I I don't get mail every day anymore either, and and I referred some of the people to Congressman Raskin's office who. A staff that have been willing to help, but if it's mailed fifteen days in advance and it takes like a week to get there, I could easily imagine that. You know, it's important and all people will open it, but then that starts to get tight, so fifteen days, that's the only thing I would suggest. It's okay to say that in the resolution, but I think we should seek for something sooner than that, I would just say.
I understand what you're saying and I I don't disagree with you at all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I know we had two. Changes, I don't know if somebody wants to move these amendments that the city clerk passed around. They were just section five point eighteen zero nine zero, tabulation of mail in ballots. It was just the in B three include received by. Other means established by the city clerk and then in section five point two zero. Point zero six zero, tabulation of absentee ballots in B three, the same addition.
I'd be willing to move that since that was brought to our attention by resident of Ward one who shared it with me, so happy to move that.
Okay, do I have a second? For that amendment, Councilwoman DeBala, any discussion or questions about that? Alright, seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Okay, Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe. Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Did we lose her? She's still here. Great, alright, so that passes and we'll come back for the second reading.
Mayor Stewart.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't know, there were some questions about the. Finance, the forums, the. Council. I'm sorry, the candidates' campaign for. Did did anyone want to propose an amendment related to that or should that wait until second reading? I could wait till.
I can wait second reading because we just called the vote on this one.
That was a, that was a concern that I had asked about, but it was all sort of dependent upon. The timeframes, which I didn't see until five minutes ago. And so I, it might make sense to do it, but I didn't feel like I was in a position to do it now.
Yeah, so there is next week, there's next week.
Yeah. There is next week, and if we had something, did we have something that someone had proposed or?
I had raised it, but I hadn't proposed something specific, because honestly, without knowing the different. Timeframes for the for the mailing was hard to really.
As you think about it for next week, I think my suggestion was to think about the timing related to election day. Think where we went wrong before was some of the timing was related to early voting and some of it was related to the nominating caucus. So I think if you back off from election day itself and decide when you want to see those reports turned in. That it will work better and so Nick, perhaps think about it for next week as to what.
Just to explain to my colleagues who I don't blame for potentially not having read my note about it. The way we had it structured now, the the final financial report that candidates would have to file. Was due about three weeks before the election and that might have made some sense when we had early voting, but. I think in general, in terms of transparency, we don't want the last three weeks to sort of be in the dark and then only emerge. You know, a week after the election, and so. I think just adjusting the due dates for those submissions so that there's at least one more closer to. You know, fairly close to right before the election, so people can see how money is being spent and contributed. That close to the election would make sense, but again, without having known all the other dates and whether there was early voting and all those things, it wasn't really possible to. Determine that.
Okay, so I I don't have, I don't see anything in my email with a proposed suggestion. So we have a lot that we're voting on tonight and next week, so if anyone wants to make a change, I ask that. They send it ahead of time so that we can make sure we're doing it appropriately, so. For now, we will move, we'll keep what we've just passed and we'll come back to it next week in the second reading. And if there's a suggested change on the timing of the financial reports, we can do it then in second reading. Alright, the next.
I I think we just voted on the amendments, but we didn't actually vote on the ordinance. Unless I just completely blanked out, I think.
Is that what we did?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to the city clerk, I have so many documents open right now, I'm really like. Trying to keep track of everything, alright, so. Do, alright, thank you, and I apologize to the city clerk, so. Do we, does somebody, does somebody want, since we did not vote on the ordinance yet, does somebody want to propose a change to the? Financial. When the financial disclosures are due.
I think we really have to look it over, I don't think it should be done at the last minute.
Okay. So then now will the city clerk call the roll, call the vote on the ordinance?
Yes, Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember DeBala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe. Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Alright, so now we'll come back to the thank you, Councilwoman Kostic, thank you to the city clerk. We will come back to this next week in the second reading and make the changes needed. Alright, now we're moving on to the ordinance regarding the details of the city election.
Yes, and.
If the city clerk wants to say anything about this, there.
I I would like to walk through it quickly. So it, before each election, the council adopts an ordinance. Setting out some of the details that aren't necessarily included, some of which are in the city code and some of which are not in there and. This. Puts you on record for certain decisions related to the election, so. In in section one of the ordinance, and it, this ordinance, unlike the typical election ordinance. Takes into account what we're dealing with with COVID nineteen as well, which makes things different from usual for us. So as as you all expect, the nominating caucus will be on Tuesday, September fifteenth at seven thirty. We. That caucus will be held online this year and. Accommodations will be made to allow for participation by phone or other means for anyone who's not able to participate online. Then section two talks about election day itself, and here's where you go on record saying that the like, this election shall be conducted by mail. Ballots will be, we'll use ranked choice voting as always. Ballots allow for a write in as always, in this case, a ballot will be mailed to every qualified registered voter of the city. For voters who cannot vote by mail, at least one voting center will be open from seven AM to eight PM on election day, November third. Absentee voting will be available. And if necessary, individuals will be able to to vote by provisional ballot when that is needed. Section three is an important one, so in section three. It reads, the city manager in coordination with the city clerk and board of elections is authorized to select a contract with a vendor. To print, insert and mail the ballots to eligible city voters. The city manager shall inform the council of the selection as soon as practicable. And that is included this time, it's a little unusual because we don't yet have our vendor for. For the mailing and and that will be an important selection, we don't have a decision on that yet. And that it will need to be made during the recess. So the section three of this ordinance that I put before you. Section four talks about early voting. The charter provides that early voting days, hours and mechanisms shall be established. Because this election is being conducted by mail to limit personal contact, traditional early voting won't be conducted this year. The Board of Elections and City Clerk may arrange for and promote hours and locations for voters to seek assistance in marking and casting their ballots. But again, the board needs time to develop that plan and it is, we don't have that plan at this time. Names of qualified candidates will go on the ballot after the nominating caucus. As always, this is a paper ballot election. And the code actually sets forth how the names are arranged on the ballot, they're alphabetical. Mayor's contest is first and the ward council member contest is next, followed by any advisory referendum. We, the write in as pursuant to the city charter changed that the council is in the process of adopting. Write in. People interested in being write in candidates may register from after the nominating caucus up through. Very close to the election and those names would be posted on the city website and put in any location where voting is taking place. For the city election. Sample ballots, as always, will be published and I found a typo in the in this draft, it's in section nine. It says a sample ballot showing the arrangements of candidates' names, offices, council member wards and advisory referendum questions. Which will appear on the city election website shall be posted on the. On the city election ballot shall be posted on the city website and at any voting location, I apologize, I corrected something that wasn't actually wrong there. Continuing on to things that are different for this year. As always, Tacoma Park residents may register up to it, including the day of the election. The Board of Elections serves as judges of elections and starting this year, the board will appoint election workers to assist. Rather than have those appointments made by the council, and that's pursuant to a change that the council made to the city code. And here, section thirteen, election judges and other election workers are eligible to receive payment equal to the schedule for Montgomery County. Election judges and election workers, we're gonna be recruiting from the same pool of applicants. And is my recommendation that these judges and workers be paid the same as they would if they were working for the county. Section fourteen is a. Directs that the city manager may authorize hazard pay for election judges and workers. And provide for any and all necessary measures to protect the health of the election workers as well as ensure transparency of the process. Election judges and workers must participate in training. The Board of Elections, as always, will ensure the secrecy of the ballots, correct counting of votes, tabulating and recording. tabulating and recording votes by ward, and prompt reporting of election returns in each contest. If no candidate receives a majority of votes, then the ranked choice voting comes into play. And finally, the Board of Elections will meet and certify the election on Thursday, November 12th, 2020. So this is the basic plan without some of the details that I wish we had. This is the basic plan for the election. So I would ask that you, if you have any questions, please ask. If you want to make any changes, they can be made, of course, at second reading. If you're willing to adopt this at first reading tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. I see Councilwoman Dibala has a question.
Yeah, I, do you, do you want this, this to be moved first or not? That's not the question.
If you just have a general question, just ask it. But if you have something you want to amend, let me move it first.
No, I want, I want to ask in section three whether that should also include the cost? Or is that just implied that the selection, including how much it costs, will be shared with us as soon as we get back in September?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I have three questions. Second question is in section nine. Don't have to say this in here, but are there some other places where the sample ballot can be posted? For example, the window of the front door of the city hall. Some of the places around town where there's still working bulletin boards. Is that kind of thing possible? Does, again, doesn't have to be in here.
Sure, it's possible.
Just a thought.
We could look at that, yes.
And then another thought along those lines in, I think it was section 13 now. Generally, you named a number, you named three mailings and some other publicity. Do you want that to be in here in the ordinance? Or do you want it to not be in the ordinance and just be part of the plan? Thinking for the purpose of residents who only read one thing, they read this, they don't know about the three mailings. That's why I ask.
Sure, the, if, we, we could certainly add it in here because that that is the intention. I think the, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the three mailings are included in the by-mail code amendments that you just adopted at first reading. I believe, but I think if not, that is the intention. I I can, I can add a section in here for second reading.
But then second reading.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
I just had one question, and I know we talked about it last time, but maybe you can just remind me if you don't mind. Obviously, we've talked a fair amount about the reality that because of the mail-in nature of of this election, that it's going to take longer to tabulate the results. And so that's why we have the Board of Elections in section 18, the Board of Elections meeting to certify on Thursday, November 12th. And before the city council. So I think you responded to this before, but maybe you can just remind. So in the period between the election and that certification, which is all over a week, will there be some sort of unofficial indication? I assume the counting process is public, right?
Correct.
Will it reach a point where people can say, oh, look at that, you know, this candidate clearly has a majority of the votes? Or or is it, yeah, is it just up to people listening to comment on that? Or do we not know? And if we don't know, okay, because we're figuring it out.
I think the tally of votes, as it is put together, is a public, you know, is basically a public document. So I will talk with the Board of Elections to figure out how to make that work best. I mean, I can't promise vote by, you know, tally mark by tally mark because that's not how we're going to be counting this election. But that, you know, as ballots are canvassed and added to the totals, I I wouldn't see why those daily totals couldn't be updated. But again, I'll ask the Board of Elections for their advice on that.
I assume since the, the counting previously was done in public, that this would be a public thing. Just something that we spread out over more days, right?
I, that's what I think.
Okay, thank you.
Any other general questions? I think seeing none, will someone please move the ordinance?
Some move.
Councilmember Smith, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, any other questions or amendments to consider? Did I hear somebody? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, so now we're done with elections for the evening, for now. Now we'll move on to the resolution on principles and overarching goals for tree canopy and urban forest policy. There, based on our conversations last week, and thank you to everyone for all of your hard work on this. We posted on, I believe it was Friday, the updated resolution with the changes that were made during the work session on Wednesday night. And I will ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Councilwoman Dibala, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick. Is there any questions or amendments people would like us to consider? Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm not going to spend a lot of time since we've talked about this already. But I do just want to thank everyone for their work on this and say, I think, I think this resolution moves us in a direction that we need to be going in terms of shifting from just focus on the, the tree ordinance and the replanting requirements to a broader, more holistic look at tree canopy and taking some really important steps towards addressing equity. I do want to propose one additional amendment in the whereas section on line 59. And I can send this language around to folks if that would be useful. I would, I propose that we, or I move that we add a whereas that says, whereas renters and property owners should all have access to the benefits of tree canopy. And to move into the next section. And the reason for that is some concerns that have been raised and the things we've discussed up to this point regarding ensuring that renters also have access to tree canopy cover and the benefits of trees in the community. And we've discussed a little bit the importance of making sure to reach out to multifamily property owners to discuss what would be useful from their perspective in terms of incentivizing and encouraging planting. And then also reaching out to renters and determining what's important to them and how we can, how we can prioritize those things. So I think this is a helpful amendment in terms of calling that out specifically.
All right, Councilwoman Kostick, can you just, we don't have the chat anymore. All right.
I just emailed.
Everyone, okay. Thank you. So this is on, adds lines 59 to 60, whereas renters and property owners should all have access to the benefits of tree canopy. Would someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion of that, Councilwoman Kovar, your hands up?
I had unrelated comments.
Okay, any other discussion of that amendment? Will the clerk call the role on, Councilwoman Dibala, did you have a comment on the amendment?
Yes, I support the intent of the resolution. I just want to, I mean, of the amendment. And I, I just, the word access may have broader meaning than perhaps is what intended, it was is intended by what Councilmember Kostick just put forth. So I just wanted to, to put that perspective out there, what for people to think about before we vote.
Anyone else? All right, will the clerk call the ro, will the vote on the amendment?
Council, was there, I'm sorry, was there a second?
I think Councilwoman Kovar seconded.
Oh, okay.
Trying to pay better attention. I think, I, Councilwoman Kostick. Councilmember Kovar seconded.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar.
This is on the amendment, right?
This is on the amendment, yes. Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostick.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, now before we vote on the resolution, any other comments or amendments for the resolution? Councilwoman.
Sorry, I do, I realized I had one more comment. It's all right. I'm sorry, my brain is really scattered today. I I also just wanted to know with regard to the broader, the broader resolution. But I I understand the concerns that have been raised about the no net loss goal. And I, I think we've had a lot of discussions about this. I've talked with residents about this. And, and I understand that what we're saying in terms of it looking like not a lofty goal. You know, it it's, it seems like we're trying to to not lose ground. And and that is true, but I think the reality is that looking at the information we have in front of us about the, the number of trees that have died just in the past year or so and the risks for future trees, tree loss. I think even our starting point just right now is actually probably not at the no net loss amount that we're talking about in terms of 60%. So I, I think this is actually a loftier goal than it appears. And I think we are going to actually have to work really hard and dedicate funds and dedicate a lot of energy to maintaining that no net loss level. And so I do think it's, I I would love to increase our tree, tree canopy. But I, I do worry that adding a goal of that type at this point would, would not ground the resolution in as much of the immediate practical nature as we need. And I very much hope that as we move into the future, we'll be at a point where we can increase that. But right now, I think it's important to stick with the no net loss.
Great. Council, Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, I was about to say something similar. I just call everyone's attention to the fact there are, there are three goals here. No net loss being one of them, but also increased biodiversity and increased native, native and climate adapted species. So not just keeping, not just maintaining the, the type of urban, the the amount of urban forest, but changing the quality of that. And if you have no net loss, of course, trees die, of course, trees are removed, they need to be replaced. Targeting that replacement, targeting those in, those, those plantings to, to specific areas. So the equity piece is, is a very big part of this. And I wanted to, to just reiterate that I think those three fit very well together. And as Councilwoman Kostick said, they're very practical goals. And, and I, I also want to take a moment and, both on the tree resolution and on the tree ordinance, to thank all the, the 500 residents who filled out the survey. The Tree Commission, who spent countless hours as a commission and as individuals working on this. The Committee on the Environment for their bigger picture perspective. All the residents who commented, who sent letters, who talked to us along the way in the past year. So this, this offering is a balance of a lot of different perspectives as well as I feel taking, making a big shift and taking a step forward for protecting the urban forest. And I just wanted to, again, acknowledge how much everybody else has participated. Thank you.
Hey, Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. And I, I do want to say, Councilmember Dibala, thank all those people. And I want to thank her and Councilwoman Kostick, because we got to spend a lot of time together discussing and arguing about these things. But it was a very productive collaboration overall. And I understand, and I have, I am sympathetic to some of the concerns that have been raised about whether the targets are appropriate for us and whether they're consistent or not. And I think there were, there was a range of views. And some of us would have been potentially happier if we'd gone higher. This is where we've ended up, taking into account what everybody on the council and the community is saying. And I do want to point out just a couple of things about that. I am going to be supporting this. Number one, we don't have any goals right now. We haven't. So this is the first time we'll have any goals at all. And included within the ordinance. And I believe we'll have some additional language added to it, I hope, later, later this evening. Part of the annual report with that, and the two go together, as we've talked about, will be an annual report and recommendations from, from the staff on steps. And so I think we'll see how we're doing on an ongoing basis and we can make adjustments. But I also think when we say there's no net loss, that's a floor. And it doesn't mean the, the moment you got to it, you would just stop. That's the floor. And then beyond that, it's very clear that we're talking about working to address inequities in neighborhoods in the city that have, for various reasons. And racism, no doubt being one of them, ended up having been under treat or having less canopy than would have been appropriate. And I don't see those two goals as being inconsistent personally. We're saying, on the one hand, we're not going to go backwards at all, and then here are the ways we're going to go forward. And to me, that, is it exactly the way I would have designed it if it was just me sitting somewhere by myself and doing it? No, but I think that's actually a very, more than appropriate, a very positive set of steps. We're not going to go backwards. We're going to do everything we need to to prevent going backwards. And then in addition, we're going to go forward specifically in a way that's focused on equity. I think that makes sense for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I would just associate myself with the comments of the gratitude that was shown by Councilmember Dibala and Councilwoman Kovar. There are a lot of people to thank for this. But I also want to thank my colleagues on the council and most especially Mayor Stewart. This is an issue that has been wrangled with off and on over the last 20 years. And I think it, it especially shows the mayor's leadership in, you know, keeping this before us and, and moving this forward to where we are actually making significant changes to address the, the significant problems that we've had with the existing tree ordinance. So I want to thank all of you for your help on this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dibala, did you have something else to add?
I have one small point. It's not an amendment to the resolution. I think that we can deal with it in the ordinance. But Public Works Director pointed out at one point this week that there appeared to be some apparent conflict in the language about the reports to council in the ordinance and the master planning and the three-year assessments of the, based on the, the, the the LIDAR-style survey. I, I don't think we need to change it in, in the resolution, but I would like to come to it in the ordinance and clarify what we're looking for. That's all.
You, Councilwoman Circe.
I just want to echo my appreciation to all of the colleagues on the council. Everyone that's on the council knows that trees, ah, freaks me out, talk about them. But, you know, I, I appreciate the, the hard work that was put in and, and the desire to bring everyone along for the ride. And I think we ended up in a good place. One of my professors. One of my professors used to say, you know, a sign of good policy is when everyone doesn't get what they want, right? We can all agree that we got close enough, right? So it's, it's one of the things where I feel like this resolution and some of the nuance that we'll talk about in the ordinance may not give everyone what they want, but it's some practical changes that could ultimately get us collectively to where we want to be. So I just want to again thank councilmembers Kovar, Dibala, and Kostic and, and the mayor for moving this forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Circe. Councilmember Smith?
I would like to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Dibala, Kovar, Kostic, for all their hard work on this. I know you guys have been going at it for many months. Appreciate that we finally are at a voting point. And future councils can learn from, from what you guys have done. And if we do find that more changes need to be made to the code regarding how we plant trees in the city, how we measure the tree cover in the city, that we can learn from this experience. So I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you very much.
Great, and I'll just add my thanks to everyone, and I particularly appreciate, I think it was Councilmember Kovar who said it, that in the resolution, or maybe it was Councilwoman Dibala, we really outline three overall goals in the resolution, and I know there's been a lot of discussion of the, the no net canopy loss, as we discussed last week. But I, I really do think it's important that we look at all three of those goals. And it is the first time we've set goals, and future councils can come back to this and look at it when we have more information. But I'm glad that we were able to take this step forward. So thank you, Councilmember Kovar, Dibala, and Kostic for all your hard work on this. And to our Public Works Director and our city attorney also for looking at this. So this is the resolution that I will now ask the city clerk to call the vote on.
Councilmember Kovar.
No, we need to hear you on this one. Turn your mic on. This is two years in the making, and we need to hear it, yes.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, we're on to the ordinance now. Let's see, I, on the ordinance, before we go to the ordinance, I'm going to share my screen, if I can, and pull up the chart that Councilwoman Kostic did for us last week. Okay, can everyone see that? Yes?
Yes.
Not quite all of it.
All right, I think if I, all right, if I do that, then there has that. And I believe what we were talking about, the, the, the different versions here that we talked about last week, version four, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but that would mean that if a tree received a four, which means it's dead and ha, or has, and hazardous impacting structure, there would be no replacement. One receiving a five to six rating would be a one for one, a seven to nine rating would be a one for one. Now, the ten to sixteen would be two percent, the one percent is for, in parentheses. I just want to make sure I say this.
Undesirable.
Undesirable, okay, so I thought, and then the seventeen to twenty is three percent, and undesirable is the one point five. And that would leave us with, for replacement of trees, approximately two hundred and fifty-seven. If we moved in that direction. And turn it over now to the head of Public Works and Councilwoman Kostic to add any other thoughts to this that you have.
Ms. Braithwaite, do you have any comments or thoughts on this you want to share?
Not in particular. I mean, the options are a little bit confusing, but I think you've done as good a job as possible to lay out what the various permutations are. Again, just to reiterate, we're talking about a little bit harder than hypothetical. We're comparing if the same trees that we issued permits for from April two thousand nineteen to April two thousand twenty were issued permits in the future under this new ordinance, the difference in replanting requirements are shown in that total tree column. So again, we never know what kind of applications are coming in the door. I want to reiterate, this only addresses those trees that received, previously received preliminary approval for permitted removals. It doesn't include any of those that were issued waivers or determined hazardous, so it's just strictly those trees that people applied for and they went through the permit process.
Does anyone have any questions on this or comments?
If I can just really briefly just note a couple of items about the chart. This, in this version, I did change it just a little bit from the version that we saw last week. The number that I had for the total for option five was incorrect in the previous chart, so that's updated to the two oh four. And then there's an additional column, column six, which was an alternative option that was not in the previous chart that has been added that specifically divides up the trees rated five, six, and the trees rated seven through nine. The other proposals all have the same structure of replacement requirements for all, all trees, level five through nine. And last week, we talked a little bit about the level four rated trees, those would be trees that are dead, and then trees that are hazardous or impacting a structure, regardless of what they rate, would have no replanting requirements. And so, that's kind of the breakdown here in terms of what you're seeing. And as Mayor Stewart said, the, the option four is what we discussed last week. It would replace two hundred and fifty-seven trees, which is less than the three hundred and eighty-two that we currently have, but does move in the direction of addressing concerns we've expressed previously about trees at the, those lower levels, the five through nine, requiring a larger amount of replacements, and that being a burden on people who are trying to remove trees that are clearly declining, but are not yet dead.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I was very confused about this table last week, and I have straightened out most of my confusion. I, I lean very, very strongly towards option four now that I understand how it compares to what we have now. And that was where I was stuck, so just to let y'all know that. I do have a question about, for the Public Works Director, about trees directly impacting the structure. So, this table says that no matter, and, and what Councilmember Kostic said was that no matter how they rate on the tree rating chart, they could be completely healthy and very strong. But if they are directly affecting a structure, then they would be rated a, a four, which is to say, this is why I'm confused.
Yeah, they wouldn't be rated a four. Basically, there's language in the draft ordinance that says it gives four different criteria. One is it establishes that trees that are undesirable species are handled differently, and it references the lower, the half percentage. And then it lists three other categories, dead trees, hazardous trees, and it defines hazardous. Hazardous as being a hazard that can't be corrected by trimming a branch or pruning a tree, but that the tree itself is hazardous. And then lastly, trees impacting a structure. So basically, any of those trees would get rated the same way the tree itself would be rated, and it could rate any range of, of that category from four to twenty, depending on the other conditions of the tree. However, there's language in the draft ordinance that says if any of those four conditions are present, they get handled differently than any other tree that goes through the rating process. It would still show up with whatever its rating would be, but the replanting would not be required.
And then, and then I would like to point out a potential inconsistency between, this is for the city attorney. Based on what we just discussed, between on pages twenty-four, which is where that list of the four special cases is, and page thirty, which is where the tree rating chart and replanting chart are, to just double check that they, that those are consistent with what we've just said, because. Pardon?
That would have to be changed.
Which would have to be changed.
Well, I'll wait till you.
Right, so the point only being, could we have between now and next week?
Yes. We're going to.
Triple check that specific spot and that specific issue just one more time with feeling. Yeah, that's it.
Yes, so that's why, before we go to the ordinance, I wanted to have us select one of these. So then those areas are highlighted in the ordinance, and then we'll move to the ordinance. So first, so I wasn't, wouldn't get confused with the language in the ordinance versus just looking at this chart, because I think it's easier to think of it this way, and we will move on to the ordinance, so. Councilmember Kovar.
Yes.
I actually was not quite, so the, the last question I had for the, for the Public Works Director, and how trees that are impacting a structure currently are treated is how?
They're currently reduced to the lowest one percent replanting. So when we have cases where it's a otherwise healthy tree that's in the wrong location and, and is causing structural damage to a property, we issue a preliminary approval and require the minimum one percent replanting.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and thanks again to Councilmember Kostic for developing this chart. So I, I just want to be clear on a couple of points. If we go with number four, that does produce, you know, what we've called the gap, that would have to be filled, and I think a number of the provisions that are in the resolution, as well as the, the language there specifically on the funds that were put on hold, I think the amount is thirty thousand dollars, we're going to be looking at that in October to potentially use that for additional replanting. That and some of the other provisions could help fill the gap. Now, number six was something that I had just suggested, not because I think that's the best option, but just to show that there would be a way to get all the way back up to the, very close to the three eighty-two. Now, the other thing to keep in mind is that if we go with number four and the two fifty-seven, because the replanting requirement is lower for those in the less healthy categories of five through nine, what we don't know is will that stimulate or encourage higher numbers than there were the past year for people seeking to, to replace the trees? And so, that's, again, getting back to what I mentioned earlier when we were talking about the resolution, it's important for us to have in the annual staff reports an analysis of the extent to which we are or aren't meeting our tree canopy goals, and so that'll be an important thing, which we never had before that we'll have to look at. And I would, just to follow up on Councilmember Dibala's other comment, right now, because the draft, still at the moment, that may change if we adopt one of these categories, numerical categories, but right now, the ordinance draft says that if you're in the four through nine range, the, the less healthy trees, there's no replacement requirement whatsoever. And then we have, and this is the section that Councilmember Dibala was talking about, this provision that says trees that are imminent, in imminent decline have no replacement. If we make this change and say that five through nine have a one-for-one replacement, then we definitely do have to either eliminate or change that imminent decline language, because that would no longer make any sense. And so, again, that doesn't have to be done tonight, but I think we have to understand that those two, that the change in the chart is connected with that category. So, I will stop there.
Councilmember Smith.
My question is for Ms. Braithwaite. Now, whatever category we decide, you know, whether it's four or six, like Councilmember Kovar has just brought up, that we decide to, to go with, how long would it take for us to, a future council to get a sense of whether or not this was working? I know this is annually, right? We'll get these reports. But if we see something one year, that necessarily does not mean that whatever program we're deciding to move forward with is not working. So, in your experience, would it take three years, five years to really, you know, move this new proposal through the community and have your staff get up to speed? And, you know, I just don't want a future council to say, oh, well, this, the numbers, the target numbers that we're supposed to hit are not, we're, we're not getting close to that, so we need to abandon, you know, all this hard work that my colleagues have done.
It's a good question. I don't know that I have a crystal ball or the answer. I think that certainly you'd need a year's worth of data, because these things really are seasonal. And, and I wouldn't want to even conjecture until we see a whole year's worth go through four seasons of, of the permit applications. I think we'll have a sense of where it's going in a year's time. It certainly won't be the full picture, but it'll also enable us to kind of dig a little deeper into things that we don't have the answers for now. For instance, how many trees were removed because they're impacting a structure? While we've issued permits for that, we don't have that tracked in any way, so I don't know how frequently that occurs. So we're going to have a little bit more information with this new, with this new ordinance draft, and also with our now online application and digitized ratings. We're going to have the ability to do a lot more deeper dive into the data. So I think we'll have a pretty good sense in a year's time, kind of where things are going. How many trees and what type of category are we getting applications for remove, removal? We'll have a better sense of some of that. I agree that just because we get data after a year, whether or not we then decide to change things, I, I think we'd probably be best served by caution and just keep watching the information. If after two years we're seeing things move in a wrong direction, then I think we're pretty clear that we need to make a change. Some of it just depends on what's going to happen biologically. You know, three years ago, none of us saw the white oak die off and the kind of impacts from that. We're still kind of reeling from that, so there may be other conditions that we're not aware of that'll come in and, you know, cause a steep decline in some of our otherwise previously healthy overstory trees. So I think we're just going to have to kind of play it by ear, do our best to analyze the numbers that we do have, and then, you know, report that out to everybody to help us kind of evaluate the information.
And one recommendation that I would, I would give is this would be an incredible opportunity to partner with the data scientists at the University of Maryland to help you analyze some of that data. They probably would be able to see things that, you know, I, you know, neither one of us could, could possibly come up with. But I, I think that, that would be an incredible opportunity, you know, even to PhD students that they can look at the data that comes in from whatever proposal we go with. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Circe.
Hello, so I lean towards option four. One question, or I guess one gamble I'm willing to make with option four, is the idea that those persons who would typically fall into between the five and the nine kind of ratings, because it's a one-to-one, would then choose to plant, more likely choose to plant on their property versus contributing to the tree fund, which might then, you know, in an albeit back-of-the-envelope kind of way, still get us closer towards a goal of having, because we're running out of public space to plant, provide us with, you know, at least some replacement on private property, which is something we don't have to the extent we want right now. And I guess that's, a, a, and again, I'm, I'm just speculating. And so I lean towards option four because I'm kind of hoping that that will be the result that we, that we see, that folks will be more inclined to plant on their own, on their property. So, but I also want to make sure that we don't have this, you know, kind of weird incentive for people to kind of chop down healthier trees, you know, because there's a one-to-one. So I just want to make sure that it's, it's clear that, you know, from the director of public works perspective, for those trees that would have a rating of like the seven to nine category, right? We're not talking about trees that would otherwise be deemed healthy enough for survival, and we're like doing some, you know, kind of perverse thing by providing folks with a one-to-one. Is, is that the case?
Yeah, and I think the best way to take a look at that is to look at that that chart that's been created now and is in the ordinance, where we used to have six categories and now we have four. And if you take a look at each of those four, you know, it's roots and root collar, trunk, crown branches, tree health and species profile. And you assume right away if, if everybody's getting a one on each of those categories, it's a dead tree. So it doesn't take much to add, you know, if you look at the three to two rating versus the one rating, it, it indicates that there's decline in the tree. Some root damage decay, root collar is somewhat buried, collar damage to clay, sections of bark missing, trunk and co-dominant stem damage. So those are going to be trees where there's clearly health issues visible in the tree. Crown has some health issues, not entirely full. So those are trees that are not going to be trees rated well. Once you get into that next section of 10 to six, again, you're looking at trees that are getting some threes in addition tos, or maybe some fives in the category. So, you know, trees are in much better shape. So I don't think any of the trees that would be evaluated from five to nine are going to be trees that anybody would consider a healthy tree or a tree that had longevity on its side. It's going to be a tree that's in, that's got issues, that's in decline. And it's, you know, kind of on the downward side of its lifespan.
Thank you.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yes, to that point, some of the trees that are directly impacting a structure, crack on a foundation, tilt in a porch, are going to look very healthy, as I understand it. And so, if there were a concern, it might be about one-for-one replacement for those rather than straight out no replacement at all. But I, as I understand it, from five to nine are all trees that are actively declining and are not, with very few exceptions, are are not going to be around very long, and the few exceptions, they're just going to look dead, half-dead while they're hanging around. So that's my, the way I look at it. And so they, they do ultimately need to be removed. I see that as different from somebody's trying to build a porch, move a driveway, whatever, and, and they're wanting to remove a, an essentially healthy tree that will contribute for many years to the canopy. That's the higher numbers, as I understand it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, or are people ready to do, I guess a hand vote will probably be best on which scenario we would like to select, and then we can move on to the ordinance. Seeing no other hands or questions, I'm, what I'm hearing is people still leaning towards option four, so maybe we should start there. Can you raise your hand if option four is what you think we should move forward with? I'm seeing six, and council, alright. Good, it's unanimous. We will now move forward with option four. And so, all right, I need to stop sharing my screen, and then I'll pull up the ordinance, and we can go through that. Okay. Can everyone see that? Yeah. I'm trying to make it a little bigger. All right. Actually, this, yes, okay, good. So what's in yellow are things that we discussed last week and wanted to have put in here, and there's no need to discuss them further unless somebody wants to go back to something. The areas that we wanted to look at more specifically are ones that were highlighted in blue in the document that was on the, posted on the city website. And I believe the first section that, that comes into play is section 12, 12.080. Sorry. My cursor down, and this is the section that discusses, as the council member Kovar brought before us last week, which is if a large amount of trees are being requested to take down, that we added this new section to the ordinance, and the question before us was whether or not 10 was the appropriate threshold for this section. And Ms. Braithwaite, would you speak to that for a moment? I know you, I think you emailed some of us regarding this.
Yeah, I thought it was a reasonable number. I looked back through a past couple of years of applications, and there was a surprising number of single-family homes that had four, five, and six tree, tree removals. Many of those were dead trees and undesirable trees, so it's often a case where, you know, someone kind of has a, a large lot or a deep yard and doesn't look back into it much, and then discovers, you know, some years later, that's a significant number of trees that are in decline. So I, I thought that my assumption about what this was going for, particularly that requirement to hold a community meeting, was not necessarily the single-family property owner, but more a commercial lot or a a large-scale development, a multi, you know, multi-home development or a commercial development. So that is my assumption based on kind of what the intention is to hold a community meeting. I think it would be fairly, a little bit onerous to have an individual property owner be required to hold a community meeting, provide notices to adjacent neighbors, provide a report to the city. That, that seemed to me to be probably not what the goal of this was, but really more reaching those institutions or commercial lots or multiple developments that may be impacted. And so I thought that the number of 10 trees seems like, seemed like an appropriate number that might typically be impacted with one of the larger-scale developments or institutional development.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in, Mayor, I think Ms. Braithwaite has summarized the idea behind this, and it was spurred by a large institutional proposal for removal of dozens and dozens of trees from Montgomery College. That is going to be going through the tree commission appeal process. That wouldn't be affected by this because that permit was already filed. If there's a concern that there could be a rare individual case of one single homeowner who had something like this, and the community meeting would be viewed for an individual homeowner as being onerous, I'd be open to something that would say that if it was an individual homeowner, I'm not sure how you would define it, and there was a hardship for them to have to have the community meeting that, subject to approval of the city manager, can be waived, I'd be open to something like that, because again, this is intended to be for major institutional, commercial, multifamily, multi-home developments as opposed to one individual person. So if people are in all concerned about that one type of case, I'd be willing to include in it an opportunity for someone to, if they say it would be hardship to have the community meeting, to have that waived, but in a discretionary way by the, by the staff.
Member Smith?
Look, can you tell me how this language would apply to if there was future development on the Washington Adventist Hospital campus? Anybody, Ms. Braithwaite, Councilmember Kovar?
Sure, my, my sense of what would be required in that is the property owner, if it's still the Adventist Hospital at the time, and they envision that whatever they're proposing will require the removal of 10 or more trees, it would trigger that need for them to notify the neighborhood, schedule a community meeting, and hold the meeting, and then provide a summary of that meeting to the city when they then applied for their tree removal application. So the requirement is that prior to them submitting an application to the city for the tree removal, they would have previously had the community discussion process in place.
And so, would, if I can just jump in, the notion is that the regular, just 15-day posting that the neighbors see when someone is applying to remove a single tree or a couple of trees because of the example given earlier, or they want to build a deck or a porch or whatever it is, that seems fine for a routine situation like that, but when it comes to, you know, not just 10, but maybe 77, which was the number in the case of Montgomery College, just that regular posting timeframe without some level of additional communication, it just seemed like the regular process wasn't sufficient to cover it. And so that's the aim of this, to, to not say, even though it's vastly more and could have a much more significant impact on the, on the neighborhood, because of that, it doesn't make sense just to have that routine two-week posting with, with no other requirements needed.
And, and so, the definition of community because of the location of the hospital, that would not to the hospital property, that would not necessarily mean just Ward 5, that would be Ward 5, Ward 2, and also unincorporated Silver Spring. Am I correct in, in thinking that?
Well, it doesn't really specify that level of it. What it does call for is that the council member where it's located in the city staff, and I think the mayor all get told. And so, in addition to being posted and on the website, people like us then can spread the word. At one point, we had looked at the idea of saying everybody who lives within X number of feet of the site, which is what we do for the in a small cell tower language. But we didn't end up doing that, and I think the, the notion was that if the elected officials are made aware of it, that we'll make sure the word gets out.
Okay.
So Councilmember Kovar, this is Suzanne LeBlanc. The only thing that I don't quite fully kind of get the scheduling of, and, and I don't know that it's a problem for this language, but it'll be interesting once this comes into play a few times, is how this plays out with other, with other hearings about the project, because it's, it's not likely to be a case where it's just taking down the trees. It's usually a development project of some kind or some other, you know, and, or there's a major environmental issue going on or something. So I'm just, you know, trying to figure out the timing of when this kind of thing happens, or if you could have this meeting at the same time, kind of co-locate it with a different kind of site plan, review meeting, or whatever, but I, I think it, from my sense of this, it's going to be the first time this comes up, it'll, we'll start trying to figure, figuring it out, and then may have to tweak the language.
Yeah, and I think, you know, typically with these bigger projects, they, they, the, the developers or the institution hires people who have some familiarity with the, with the requirements, and they work on the scheduling and the timing of those things, and it may just be that they'll have to learn, you know what, guys, there's one more need that you got to have when you do this, in addition to your planning board meetings and, and some of the other things that you have to do. And I don't imagine this kind of thing happening all that often, and, my hope in some ways would be that we'll do this, and it would be rarely used, because in general, we don't want vast amounts of trees to be taken down, but Councilmember Smith is right, I mean, certainly with respect to the hospital site, one could imagine that. You know, there, there may be others as well. So I think it, it just, whether it could be combined with another meeting, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it'll, if it happens enough, it'll become a routine part of whatever the developers have to do.
Good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, I think I'm generally okay with the language here, and I don't have big concerns about trying, needing to define the type of property owner. The one question I had was whether it would be possible in terms of the structure of how this would work to specify that this would be for removal of 10 or more live trees, so that if someone has tree, you know, they have some mass event where there are 10 trees that died due to an infestation, they wouldn't have to go through that process.
It covers what are defined as urban forest trees,
Right.
which by definition have to be of a certain size, you know, over the seven and five-eighths inch diameter, whatever the number is, and in other ways, yeah, if somebody wants to, I mean, Ms. Braithwaite can clarify this or confirm this, but I think if there were 10 dead trees, there are 10 dead trees, and you don't, that wouldn't really be relevant. Is that, is that right?
Well, I think we would need to clarify that in this language, because a dead tree is still considered an urban, for, urban forestry, and you're still required to make an application to the city for the removal of that dead tree. So we, we would need, need to just, I mean, I think it goes without saying, it would meet the size threshold, the seven and five-eighths inches in diameter, so it would be for smaller trees, but I think we would need to clarify if it was a dead tree, that 10 or more live trees.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I'd like to propose we add live there.
Because I just, I want to make sure, though, do we use live trees anywhere else, and is that actually something? Are we now throwing in a new term that we've never used before, and we've used this rating system? And I'm just concerned now, all of a sudden, we're putting in live trees, and what, what, how do we define a live tree?
Yeah, I mean, I would, it, it seems unnecessary to me, just because if it's a big, huge project, having the one community meeting, you know, I think that people want to hear what's going on, and even if it's to cut down 11 trees, that, that might be dead, that, that doesn't seem like a super burdensome thing for a huge institution to have to do.
I, I guess my concern is that that could potentially be a private property owner who has a larger lot. I, I guess my concern is that that could potentially be a private property owner who has a larger lot where there are, I mean, it would be a lot. That, that seems very unlikely, but that you wouldn't want to have someone who just has a ton of dead trees to have to go through this process. I, I mean, maybe they would be, maybe they would qualify as emergency removals because they're dead. And we can look at this more before next week. I don't think we need to get stuck on it right now, but maybe that's something we can follow up on.
I do think that park and planning, for example, takes down many dead trees or whatever. And I don't know that they would get, fall into this category, but.
A rating of five or higher based on?
I'd prefer to have a rating in there.
Yeah, it wouldn't be rated yet because it wouldn't have gone through the application process. So this is prior to their application, so we wouldn't have even been out to the site yet. And I think part of what the original intention was to generate community discussion and input before the city were to weigh in with a, a decision.
Right, right, I understand. I, I hear it.
So if they have, if they have a meeting and then they apply and the city says, you're in luck, you don't have to worry about it because they're all dead? Has anyone really been harmed? I guess that's the question.
So what would people like to do here?
Let's, I, I'll, since I raised it, I'll, I'll say, let's leave it without an additional provision. And I'll take a look over the next week and if there's something more.
Okay, so we're changing it to 10 and not making any other changes. And that goes for this, as well as, I think there's one other mention.
Yeah.
In case you, you and I talk.
Right down here. So, all right, so now in this section, we're making it 10. And I realize this, when I do this document up here, it doesn't show me the page number. So bear with me when I get to the next section, which.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? So I, I had a couple of small things that I didn't get a chance to send around to everybody in advance. Would you prefer to do them as we're going along or at, at the end afterwards?
Prefer to go through all the blue.
Okay, good.
Items that were already identified, and then we can go back through. So this is here where, where an owner possesses, proposes removing an urban forest tree that the city manager has determined to be dead or in imminent decline because of a significant defect or infestation that cannot be ameliorated reasonably. I think Councilmember Kovar, this is a point you have raised. Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, well, I think with the change that we made earlier, in a, previously, the four through nine category was essentially this category. And we're saying here, in this current version of this language, number two, that there's no replacement required. Now, we've just basically, in approving Councilmember Kostic's option four, I think we've changed it so that you know, the term imminent decline had a lot of problems. We talked about changing that to severe decline or something else. But I think now, what might make sense, and maybe we don't have to decide that tonight, but what might make sense is to change two to just say, or get rid of it completely, or just clarify that it, now it's a one-for-one replacement instead. But I think two becomes unnecessary based on what we approved earlier.
And if the, the city attorney has any views on whether or not two should be deleted completely or?
Well, Skip is unmiking. I would just say, I think it's helpful to maintain the dead tree. So that people are clear that if it's a dead tree, which is the number four in our rating, there's not a replanting requirement.
So maybe take out the part that's highlighted? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So it's just the part that's highlighted. All right, so we'll take that out. So this is page 24. The document that, based on the document that's on the city website, line six and seven, we will take out the highlighted section. So we'll just talk to dead trees. Okay, moving on then to page 31. Bear with me. Okay. So this now says for trees rated four through nine using the above scale, no replacement tree is required, but strongly encouraged on or off-site. So now this should read.
Would basically be for trees rated four, there's no replacement required. And for trees rated five through nine, there's a single replant required for every tree removed.
Okay. All right, we will change that. So a rating of four, no replacement. And then.
Strongly encouraged.
We still can encourage them.
Yeah, right. And then five through nine, single. Okay. All right, so that, the city attorney have all that? You good? Okay. So that's all we had on the, from last week. Now, if anyone has anything additional.
And to the, to this point, in this exact spot, number one says, trees rated four to nine, now it says four. Number two shows a table, trees rated 10 to 20. I leave it to the city attorney and the, and the public works director, whether to put trees five to nine in the table, or whether to have just a sentence about what happens to trees five to nine. Rated five to nine, but, but it needs to be addressed here somehow.
Yeah, I, I would think it would be helpful to put it in the table. Of course, the table references percentage, so we're gonna kind of change the language, but.
This is what I was saying before.
Yeah, right, right. But now that we know what we're doing.
Yeah, you were right.
And while we're on this page, Mayor, can you scroll down just slightly? There's a number three below that I just want to point out, there's a, a word, word error that we should correct. It references there each replacement tree. So it's saying, for trees removed or damaged in violation of this chapter or a tree, approved tree protection plan, the total basal area of each replacement tree must be no less than 10%. It's not each replacement tree, it's the total basal area of the replacement tree or trees has to equal 10%. And I would just, yeah, put a parentheses at the end, yeah, tree, parentheses S, you know, tree or trees, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Kovar, what are your changes?
Well, actually, there's, Councilmember Kostic has sent around some in 1212140. Unless those are picked up already, I'm not sure if they were. That's near the end, 1212140.
Yeah, we were gonna do those just as amendments during the meeting. Do you want to go ahead with yours? I just have one very small one.
Yeah, we do those and then I'll go to mine after that.
Okay.
Because these two are both in 1212140, right?
Yes, so in 1212140D, I think it is where it says, maintain and maintain. What we discussed previously was maintain and publicize a species list. This was in the draft language that we had up last week, I believe.
Okay.
And then the other one was, Councilmember Kovar had suggested in 1212140B.
So go back up, right?
Yeah, go back up to number four. Recommending as needed, and that one at the end, adding or to help meet tree canopy goals.
And so this is the, the very point that we were making earlier about, and Councilmember Smith also asked, how we know whether we're doing okay? This is
Yep.
the point that gives us that.
Okay.
And while we are here on C, reporting every six years about the master, not reporting, every six years updating the, the city's master tree plan. Down at the bottom, crossed out is where it refers to the most recent tree canopy assessment. And that got deleted and it wound up in the resolution. The, I think the intent here is, every year, there's an annual report with a bunch of information about how we're doing. Every three years, there is an assessment of the tree canopy overall through LiDAR or whatever works better. And what's not in here, but is in the resolution, is in a sense of whether the tree canopy goals are still appropriate. We added that to the resolution, one or two.
Language?
I, I only just discovered this about an hour before the meeting, so I, I don't have it written down. My question is, would people like to put in some clarifying language that repeats what's in the resolution about what we want every three years versus the master plan? And then, which case, I'll write something up and send it around.
For me, this was fine. I thought it was general enough for the ordinance. We can change the resolution. I personally, I think it's, it said sort of, it says no later than six years. We're gonna have this, the city's master tree plan. I, I think it's broad enough. I, I don't see the necessity of.
Okay, so then.
My view.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if you had suggested adding in whether we were meeting our tree canopy goals, is that what the suggestion was, Councilmember DeBala?
The, the resolution talks about doing a tree canopy assessment every three-ish years and using that to advise us on whether the tree canopy goals should be should be adjusted. That's not in here in the ordinance. That's fine with me. I just want to clarify that that is the intent to have that advice more frequently than every, every six years you prepare a master tree plan based essentially on two rounds of tree canopy data.
I don't have a strong opinion right now, but I'll, I'll think it through.
Can we ask Ms. Braithwaite for her opinion?
I would love that since it was her question.
I really don't have an opinion. I guess my, I have a general sense that it's, this ordinance is complex enough, and so I sort of feel like unless there's something particular that you're trying to achieve, I just didn't think that language was necessary in an ordinance. But again, it's too late and I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm prepared to withdraw this.
And Councilmember Kovar, any other additional changes?
Could you go to 1212080 again? Back up. I'm not sure what page it is, but.
I'm there.
Okay, and then go to A1D. So there's a, there's one. So these are the six, go down a little further. These are the six criteria on which the judgment is made on a tree. And if you look at D, it says, location of the tree in relation to targets, people or property that may be subject to injury or damage due to tree's failure, or utilities above or below ground upon which the tree may have an adverse impact at present or in the future. Now, the separate lines that we already looked at where it said a, a tree that is having a negative impact on the structure doesn't need to have a replacement. This here, however, D only talks about damage to people or property, property could include a permanent structure due to a tree's failure. In some cases, it's not the tree's failure that is causing the damage to the, to the structure, it's just the way the tree is growing. And so I would propose just to make that a little more consistent to say, or, or utilities or permanent structures above ground or below ground upon which the tree may have an adverse impact, just so that there's some level of consistency there. It's not literally identical language, but just so that it's clear that we're not just talking about how it must be tied to the failure. And I, I admit that I only really got a, a real focus on this today. And I, I did share this with Ms. Braithwaite, and she may not agree with me on it. But it struck me that that was missing there.
Ms. Braithwaite, do you have any, an opinion on that?
Or when, there was previously nine criteria that were used for, and again, this is a criteria that the arborist uses to do the first cut of, is this eligible for a permit or not? Is this, you know, is this preliminary approval possible? And so the Tree Commission spent quite a bit of time, as did the former city arborist, kind of trying to massage those nine criteria into things that were a little more clear, less sense of subjectivity and more easily understood. And my recollection of D was that they were really trying to get at, you know, we all have heard and certainly have exhibited the presence of a tree with branches over somebody's house to some persons could be seen as a hazard. The tree's perfectly healthy, but its branches are over my roof, therefore I, I feel endangered. I don't, I don't feel safe. In our evaluation of that, we, we don't consider that to be a condition that warrants a tree removal, just the presence of the tree, providing the tree is healthy. And so the goal of this originally was to try to get at certainly the use of the term target, which is a, a term of, of specific meaning in a bore culture, but also to tie it to not just the fact that you have a tree in your yard and a swing set underneath it, therefore the swing set is a target, the tree has to go. But to try to tie it to a tree's failure. So this is a tree in decline or has a hollow spot or a rotten section or, you know, crack in the, in the structure so that it would be damaged due to a tree's failure that would be impacting people or property, not just the presence of the tree.
Right, so I think the examples you give, I understand, but I think, and I don't know if my colleagues would agree with me, I, I think that among the situations we were considering for this would be, if there's a tree that's basically healthy, but its roots are, you know, damaging the foundation of a home or something like that.
Right.
The tree itself may still be healthy.
Right.
But not failing.
Yeah.
I think that was what we were talking about in terms of damage to the structure.
Yeah, and as we talk about it, I think what might make sense is to split D into two sections so that we keep the first part, the location of trees in relation to targets. That might be damage due to a tree's failure. And in the second one, because those are more connected, utilities or current structure. And we may have to define structure. So utilities are current, we may want to say permanent structure. That may have an adverse impact. So there, there you can get at, the tree itself may be fine, but if it's located over your water meter vault, that's not gonna work. The tree's gotta go. Or if the tree is, you know, hitting your roofie or busting through your foundation wall, the tree may be perfectly healthy, but it's creating structural damage. So my recommendation would be to split D into two, into two separate sections. It would then be one, two, three, four, five, seven instead of six criteria.
Not the word current, right? Just permanent structure.
Yeah, existing, I mean, I, I would think permanent structure means it's in place now, but. Yeah, existing. I mean, I would think permanent structure means it's in place now, but. And that's just trying to get at, you know, is your lead walk a reason to remove your tree because it's evening? Some people, yes, and city's code, it's been no. So we're really trying to get at, you know, more significant properties than.
All right, and that needs to be fixed. I'm just going to do that.
Okay, and thank you. That's very helpful. And I just have two more small things and then I'm done. So if you go to the bottom of this, 1212-080 to number five, the very last provision in there. And keep going. So there's five. So if the city manager determines that the applicant is not entitled to a tree removal permit, that'll be based on those five, six, now seven categories. The city manager shall cause the applicant to be notified that the city has preliminarily denied the application. So one of the things I've heard a lot about, and I, do you have an exchange with Ms. Braithwaite? This is something that we're going to have to just spend a little time to figure out. It is that people don't always receive what they consider to be a detailed enough explanation of, of why they were turned down based on one or more of those six or seven categories. And so I was thinking that it would just make sense at the end of this section, this provision, just to say, and shall provide a written explanation of the reasons for the decision. Now, one of the things that I subsequently heard about was, well, we're going to be doing it online, so it's going to be harder to do that. But I really do think in terms of good government and what we're trying to accomplish here with the ordinance, that there ought to be a written explanation in some form explaining to a person so that then they understand, okay, am I going to appeal this or not? I need to know. You don't have to tell me what happened on every six or seven of those criteria, but you need to tell me on the one or two that apply, why I didn't pass muster. So that's, that's why I would suggest saying preliminarily deny the application, comma, and shall provide a written explanation of the reasons for the decision. That's what I'm proposing.
Couldn't we just say, and just provide? Does it have to be written?
Yes.
It does? Is that the city attorney? Yes, okay.
You can even reference, if it's going to be online, however, you just have to reference the location so the person can know what the reason is so they can make an informed decision about appeal.
Yeah, one of the things I was mentioning to Peter is in the past, each of these things was done manually. So every, every decision, we, you know, someone typed that letter. We might be using a form letter as a basis, but someone is typing that letter, mailing it out, whatever. Now that we have the online application, you can see every aspect. So there's much more transparency than there was before. Now someone can go in and know when the arborist was there, know what they, what criteria they used, know what the rating was. You can even see the rating per item, the total, the replant. You can just see everything as well as the arborist notes. So the, the amount of information that's going to be accessible and viewable to people and currently is now with the new online application should provide much more of that, kind of behind the curtain peek at what, what caused the decision.
Maybe that information that's already on the website is sufficient, but I think it's important to say and provide a written explanation. I would say, and provide a written explanation of the reasons for the decision. So that way.
What I wanted to avoid is a case where we're doing this electronically, and so we're not going to stop and do a manual letter to somebody. We want it to be the same as what they have available on the online portal.
So how would that, how would that be done then?
They have access to that. It's their application. They look at it. They could see everything about the application. I definitely would not want to have to single out somebody and have someone in the office write a manual letter when we're going to an online permit processing system.
Councilmember Kovar, I think that there is a way for us to, on the online item, just, you know, as the city attorney mentioned, point to the, just point to the reason.
Yeah, it'll be clearly identified in the, in the.
And that, that would be, that would be considered written and they could print it out.
Okay. So we're cool with this one? What else?
If everybody else has done, I had a couple of little ones that I caught.
I don't think Councilmember Kovar's done.
Well, there's one last one.
Yeah.
Talked about, and I think she agrees with it. One of the things I've heard, let me get you the category, the the location for 1212-100C. And this is the last one. So in C, what several people mentioned to me is that the calculation uses a diameter measurement and the practice has been that the amount is automatically rounded up to the next whole number, or maybe it's an integer. And so even slightly over X number of inches, it goes up to the next number of inches. And if there's several trees, it can lead to additional planting requirements. And so what I was suggesting was that it'd just be, if it's up to point five, you can go round down and it's above point five, you round up. Ms. Braithwaite suggests some language. I don't know if we need to have that now or I could send it in before next week, but the notion was just to not automatically round everything up. Did I capture what we talked about accurately?
Yep.
So Darrell, I'm sorry, Ms. Braithwaite had submitted or sent something to me. I think I shared it with the mayor, but I didn't have any opportunity to send it around. So I, we can look at it now, or I can read it off, or we can just.
I just highlighted the city attorney can make the change if Ms. Braithwaite's good with it and other people don't have objections. Ms. Braithwaite, what are your, just tell me the second.
And I'm not going to know page numbers, but I noticed in 1212-050. You're going to beat me there?
I did. I got, I figured it out. I could do fine.
Oh, how many weeks have I been doing this? I just figured out how to go up and down. All righty, and it may be taken a little out of context, but in the prior, if you scroll down to B1 and then there's A through D. So it says basically, this is for emergency situations. So in the past, in other sections, we had, if there's an emergency and you didn't apply for a tree impact assessment or a tree protection plan, it references these same A, B, C, D. This particular session, section is specific to tree removal permits. So it's, in my understanding of this is if there's an emergency and a tree's got to come down because there's a sewer bust or something, the tree's going down. So there, we just need to change the language in C and D not to reference a tree impact assessment or a tree protection plan because in this particular case, this is, is for a tree removal permit. So, you know, when the emergency action is taken pursuant to paragraph one, I'm assuming since it's under tree removal permit required, it means that they've removed the tree. And so they have to document the existence of emergency, cease activity when the risk of significant harm is eliminated, notify the department, provide documentation of the emergency. And what we should be asking for is request the tree replacement analysis to be done. So we can tell them, yes, you had to remove that tree in an emergency, Washington Gas or whoever, but it was a 14-inch diameter, you know, black gum, so you need to do XYZ replant. So we want, we, we need to, instead of having a tree impact assessment, which we're not going to do that for a tree that's gone, or the D, a tree protection plan, we need, they need to notify us of the removal and we need to tell them what the replanting requirement is in that case.
If I can jump in, I'm not sure if this is maybe covered in a different section. But one of the things that we were trying to get at here when we, when we originally talked about the emergency language was that if there was an ongoing emergency situation, so if, if somebody had an emergency and they dealt with that, and maybe it didn't require, require a removal of the tree, but trees might be impacted by the construction, for example, that we wanted them to, to be able to come to, to be required to go to public works and take those actions as the emergency went on. So this, this wouldn't impact that. Is that correct?
Right. It's, it's also referenced two other times for both under tree impact assessment and tree protection plan. So it has the emergency act in each of those and with an exception for emergencies and includes these four A through D criteria. So for those cases, if they need to, you know, WSSC starts digging and they're impacting a tree, but it's an emergency, then they need to let us know and we need to do a tree impact assessment and potentially a tree protection plan. So that's in a prior section of the, of the language. So this is only specific to tree removal.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to make sure I got this right. So what we're saying here is then we're striking in C and request a tree impact assessment immediately or. So basically it says notify the department, provide documentation of the emergency no later than the first business day following. I lost you in D, sorry. What gets deleted in D?
Well, again, with D, they, since, and again, I'm assuming it's a removal, so it's a done deal. There's no potential activity related to the removal, but they, they need to, we need to notify them of the tree replacement required as a, as a condition of that removal. So Skip and I'll have to work on what that language should, should be.
All right, so I'm just going to highlight it then. Is that good?
Yeah.
Cool. What else?
Let me see. Oh, I wanted to point out in 1212-087, my copy says page 28. And it ties in with the section of 1212-080. It's this issue about giving somebody 45 days to file an appeal or else it can be if they're determined, if they're determined to be not unreasonably fails to cooperate. So we've got that under this 1212-070. And shoot. It already exists in 1212. I thought I said 080, B6. No, it's not. I must have written it down wrong. I can't find it. I'll have to look for it and.
All right, well, I just highlighted the, the other, the one, what'd you say, 1212-087?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I just had a question about the number of times it's included in the ordinance and where it's included. The next one I have is in 1212-100. And it's referencing A2. So it says, yeah. Applicants are required to replace trees originally indicated and intended to be saved in a tree protection plan when such trees are excessively damaged and removed, including such trees that are on adjacent property to the applicant's property. And I thought there we may want to move D3, which is a couple of pages down. It's on page 31. Yeah. So there, D3, you see there, for trees removed in excess of this. I thought rather than have it under the chart, we may want to either duplicate it there as well as anywhere we reference that trees that were damaged, that were to be protected or at this higher 10% replacement rate. So I thought it might benefit to have it referenced in 1212-100A2 as well. Maybe either to move that D3 section or to duplicate it there.
I'm just going to put a note. Yeah.
And. Oh, and then the last thing is we, we referenced on page 32, whether we were going to use the tree canopy fund or the tree fund. I, I had a different recollection. I thought we were just going to call it the tree fund. It still is called the tree canopy fund. Or was it council's intention to change it to the tree canopy fund?
Well, maybe that was missed. I think we want a tree fund because it might be used for something that might not precisely be.
Right. So it's in section, it's under E, E what? Oh, it must be 1212-100E. Oh, no, it's not, sorry.
It just, for some reason, it's not searching.
Yeah, it is. 1212-100E. It referenced the canopy fund.
1212-100.
There you go.
Page 31.
Canopy fund, yeah. And then it's also referenced on F4.
All right, I think we just have to search for it. It's okay. Let's just search for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now on.
Because I'm just, I'm not finding it.
Oh, you were, you were at it. You were on it. If you want to scroll up.
I can search for it.
Okay. Anyway. Those, I'll just leave those alone.
Yeah.
That is it.
Cool. Anyone have anything else? Little things? Nope, I'm seeing no hands. All right. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
So moved.
Councilwoman Kostic, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions or amendments? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Okay. So then we'll clean this up and we'll have the second vote next week. And I will save that and send it to the city attorney. Just to let you know, the city attorney, whatever I did knew is in fuchsia, or I think that's fuchsia. I don't know what the name of that color is. It's bright pink. All right, let me get back to our agenda. All right, now we're up to our first reading ordinance approving our FY21 budget amendment number one. Does the city attorney, the city manager have anything that we've changed or anything from, any additional information from, from, since last week?
Yes, one item was changed. I mentioned, I referenced it last week that I knew it would change. And this has to do with the amount of the carryover for the COVID-19 fund, small business mini grant line. We had said we were carrying over $90,000, but that number has been reduced to carrying it over $73,500 because we've been going through approving the mini grants and paying them off. And so the ones that really took place and got the contract signed in FY20 have to be associated and stick with FY20. And this is the other amount. So that information has been corrected in the document and even on the PowerPoint. So that's there. There was also a couple of questions from council members. Just, you know, I went through and I think just clarified a couple of items with council members, but one of the points that was raised was an example, a question about an example of the kinds of things that choices that were made moving forward. There were a number of things and number of items that weren't carried over that we didn't spend, that we didn't carry over because we either felt that we wouldn't have time to do that work, or we didn't need that those funds because of a different way of doing the project. The actual calculation of that will not be clear until we do the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which will be completed by October 31st. So that'll, you'll have more information to come on that. And I think that's, I think that's it.
Okay, anyone have any questions on this before I ask for it to be moved? Councilman Dabala.
Yes, thank you. I did have a second question. One was about what items were not carried over and why. And the other question I had was about the COVID allocation within, thank you. So just say what that's one lump sum within which there's flexibility. I'll let you explain it.
That's exactly right. So even though we have allocations under the COVID-19 Fund, some for mini grants, some for emergency assistance to residents, some for assistance related to evictions, that kind of thing. Those are not individual line items in the financial system. It's all part of the COVID-19 Fund. So if, as we go through this process, we realize that we need more money for emergency assistance for families, we can do that without making a budget amendment. It's still within that amount. We are keeping the documentation, though, for reporting purposes, back to you and for us to monitor all the information.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, I mentioned this is following up on the COVID funds and I mentioned this to the mayor and the city manager. Because of the nature of the fund as just discussed, and it's all lumped together, we don't see the level of detail that I would like to see about how the individual pieces are being used. And I know we're going to be receiving a briefing from the staff next week. I really think it's important that we have some sense for the target numbers for the various components of the fund before the before the budget votes. I don't know what the plans are for next week, but I would suggest that we have the staff report as a presentation first before the votes. If you do it that way, then we'll have a better understanding of what we're proving. I'm not going to oppose the amendment now, but I but I think that would be helpful.
We will share the information beforehand. I mean, it won't be in the order as part of the agenda, but we will share that information beforehand so that you have it. I will say that the, you know, we've made some some estimates. That's why we have the kind of pockets of, you know, the buckets of money. For example, the $150,000 for rental assistance is expected to help about 250 families. We know how many mini grants we're getting from businesses and we know the number of businesses that we have. I will say that even within the last couple of days, there have been significant changes in how the county is looking at providing some services. None of us has enough money to help everyone, but the difference in the in the way that the county is stepping up is helpful. And it is going to be a a moving target that we'll keep having to talk to you about as we learn more information and the programs become refined.
I would just say, I understand that you have multiple levels of government. The county I saw is just doing another 20 million, I think it is, for rental assistance. And so obviously, whatever we do can then be adjusted. If more money comes from the county, say, for rent or from the feds for some other purpose or whatever. So from that point of view, it does make sense to have the money all in one lump so that that it can be then more easily shifted. All I'm saying is that it would, we need to have some projection to say, here's, based on everything we know about the other sources of money, here's how much we think each, how many people, businesses, mortgages, whatever it is, we think each of these pots of money is going to help. I get that it may then change later, but that's what we, to me, what we need to have before the final vote on the budget.
I understand.
I'll look I'll look at and talk to the city staff about what their availability is since we've already set the agenda. Councilmember Kovar.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
I said I will check.
Okay.
Councilwoman Circe.
Hi. So one thing that I'm still getting a little tripped up about in reading the 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 ordinance, it appears as if the items that we weren't able to do that are being carried forward, right, are still being tagged in the system or being allocated for the original purpose of what it was originally approved for, right, which makes sense. So should it be the case, and I guess I'm still trying to to kind of do some of the math in my brain, because I'm like, there are some things that are on this list that we might have identified during the last budget cycle that, you know, could potentially be something that we approved for doing again, right? So let's say we had something in the budget for FY21 that we said, okay, we're going to do that, you know, open space management work for 25K. And then in FY20, we weren't able to do the work, rightfully so because of COVID. So we're still stuck with that 25K that we had originally allocated and we're moving that forward for the same purpose. And I guess my question is, you know, does it mean that the council will need to revisit some of its allocations? Because in some cases, we may be, we might choose to spend some of that money in another way. So instead of these carryovers going into like a general fund that we can reallocate later, they're actually going over into the budget for the original purpose that they were approved for previously. Is that correct?
Yes, so I was being very careful in this budget amendment to to be very clean, that these are items that you talked about before. You talked through the budget that these were going to be carried over. This project was continuing. We're finishing the elevator payments for the elevator repair, that kind of thing. So it's we try to keep it very clean. The couple places where I noted in my presentation last week and I put in the in the page has to do with coming back to you on the public arts money, for example, that was something that was specifically spoken about during the budget process that we weren't going to allocate more money in FY21, but we were carrying over the money from the projects that didn't happen in FY20. So that was something that was specifically talked about. The only thing that's new here is the $17,000 for the Zoom meeting capacity and the laptops and stuff that were very COVID-related about the transition. For for funds that were not spent in FY20 that we didn't assume would go into FY21, that now we will have available kind of in the unappropriate, unassigned reserve. That may be something that you look at and we will find out exactly how much that is as the CAFER comes out. And you may want to reappropriate. You can always reappropriate any funds and we try to bring those things to you to say, you know, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to do these sidewalk projects or or something if there's something major like that. But I tried to keep this particular list very clean about things that were ongoing projects that weren't excessive, that just needed to transfer over. You know, the next round of budget, the next budget amendment will likely have more discussion with council about if these are the kinds of things you want to do and that kind of thing. This one I tried to keep, this was just the the first one of the fist. Try to move the things across so that it just, it makes sense. And we, like I said, we didn't move everything over. It was simply those things that we felt needed to be completed and and it was part of our doable work plan.
Yeah, and I think I did see a few training items, which makes sense to be carryovers because a lot of things are being canceled and rescheduled and all of that. But I would encourage us when when we're having that discussion, I think it's in October, about, you know, more in-depth review of our budget outlook, that we continue to keep some of those principles that we talked about during the budget reconciliation process in terms of, you know, identifying things like, I hate to say it, but trainings and, you know, with an I for what are some of those carryovers? How do they relate to what we had put in the budget originally? Given COVID, and I mean, keep in mind, we're for the most part headed back towards another shutdown. You know, are we, do we need to readjust? And does that readjustment mean we need to push more funds into our into our reserves, into our general fund?
Right, I think there will, I think there will be a lot, I think there will be a lot of discussion coming up. There's certainly things that, as we're learning more, we're not spending on. And then there's other things that if we take them on, I'll need staff for or whatever. So tho- those are big conversations yet to come. This this is clean. I try to keep it, try to keep it very simple, just the items that really were were had been discussed or were very clear, you know, completion of the elevator repair.
Yep, okay.
Which, by the way, the elevator in on the Grand Avenue side looks really good. It's, I, it hasn't been improved the entire time I've worked for the city, so it's really nice. Finally see. It's acceptable.
Good. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, Councilwoman Dabala.
Yes, just very quickly, thank you, Councilwoman Circe, for asking that question because that's the same thing I was thinking about when I asked about what funds are not getting carried over and where they went. So I'm glad to hear that we'll be talking about that in the next budget amendment. Thank you.
Great, any other questions or thoughts? Okay, seeing none, will someone move the budget amendment? Let's move it. Councilwoman Circe, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dabala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Great, next, do, I'm asking the city clerk, do we have the vote to go into the Stormwater?
Yes.
Okay, would someone please move a motion for us to convene as the Stormwater Board? Councilwoman Dabala, move. Do I have a second?
Councilwoman Kostic, or
although.
Who was that?
Councilwoman Kostic. I'll get Councilmember Smith later. He can do something. Is the clerk call the vote on moving to
Stormwater Board?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dabala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostic.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Okay, any questions or anything we need to, big picture stuff before I ask for the Stormwater Budget Amendment to be moved?
No, this is very straightforward.
Okay, would someone like to move this? Councilwoman Kostic, Councilmember Smith, do you want to second it?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Smith, second. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dabala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, the next thing is we have a resolution approving submission of MML legislative action requests. I want to thank Councilmember Smith for working on this. Councilmember Smith, do you want to give an overview of what we have?
First, I just want to thank everybody for submitting suggestions. The resolution is broken down, I think you could say, three distinct parts. One would be police reform, another workforce development funding, and then finally Councilmember Dabala has a proposal for, that would be in line with our climate change priorities. So I thank everybody. I appreciate it. I think this will be well received by the Legislative Committee.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking, I'm trying to see if the, what, I'm going to ask the city clerk if you know if the one that was posted online has Councilwoman Circe's changes to it.
It does. It's the one, yes, it does.
So the one that we have before us that I will ask us to move and then we can amend if we want to, as Councilmember Smith said, outlines in one category, urges MML to initiate or support legislation that bolsters the economy within Maryland municipalities. Under that has supporting small businesses through tax incentives, grants and technical assistance, increasing workforce development opportunities. And then the second piece is the council urges MML to initiate or support legislation on police reform that would require the repeal of the LEOBR, transparent investigations into police misconduct, limiting the use of force by law enforcement and expanding or establishing mobile mental health crisis units. So that's what we have before us and we can, why don't we move that? And then will Councilwoman Dabala, you can offer an amendment. I think Councilwoman Kostic may have had an amendment too.
Sure, I just wanted to ask where, I'm not seeing it posted, but maybe I'm.
It's on the city website under our.
Let me.
Your your addition wasn't posted. I didn't see that you added it, Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, I I understand that. I'm not seeing anything posted and that's why I feel like I must be looking in the wrong place.
I just pulled it up on the, here, I can, let me share my screen again.
Yeah. Okay, that that'll work. Thank you. I know it's late, but.
Okay.
Okay, I I see. Thank you.
All right, would someone like to move?
So moved. And let me just say, I was remiss and I want to thank Councilmember Circe for her contributions to the resolution.
All right, Councilmember Smith, move. Do I have a second? Councilmember Circe, thank you. All right, now, does anyone have any comments or amendments they would like to propose? Councilwoman Dabala.
Yes. I sent around and I apologize for not realizing that the first part was already posted. I thought I was still within the deadline for posting, so I apologize. But I had proposed to add a third, because we're allowed three, and we talked about climate last time as one of the areas we would consider putting forward. Last year, we put forward climate, specific climate, two specific climate bills because at that point in time, we knew exactly which bills were being put forward, but the point at this, at that time was the same as the point this year, which is that it is, it's a high priority for the city. It's a statewide issue of great import. Municipalities cannot make progress on this issue without support and direction from the state. So should I read it or is it possible?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it up here, sorry.
Okay, so it's a two, it's a two-part, it's a two-part shuffle. Uh one is a whereas that mirrors, that whereas is about economic disruption due to COVID and um the importance of police, police reform. And so the third whereas is what I, what I, very similar to what I just said. The city council has recognized a continuing statewide climate emergency that affects municipalities and their residents statewide by declaring a climate emergency, which we did in March of 2019, and adopting a framework for climate emergency response i- in 2020, which we did. Um and it recognizes, and we recognize that communities, neighborhoods, and residents most vulnerable to climate impacts tend to be least prepared to manage and recover. And the reason I think it's important to let MML know both of those points is because last year and I hope again this year, uh we, we have uh supported legislation that um addresses energy efficiency in low and moderate income families and energy efficiency for um for multifamily buildings that our delegation has proposed. So um that's why I think we should stress that point and not just talk only about a climate emergency per se. Um and then the the recommendation to the Maryland Municipal League is to initiate or support statewide climate mitigation and adaptation legislation that would help municipalities to do what we need to do. Um and there's several bullets you can see, um resources and technical support, um legislative authority to adopt uh a community climate, a CCE-style program, um that's from last year, um targets and resources to improve the energy efficiency of buildings, especially low and middle-income housing as, as I just described, um again, what we had last year, and um facilitate greater use of zero emission vehicles, public transit, and other decarbonizing transport strategies. And I would like also to say that these words are from our climate, many of these words are from our climate adaptation framework that we passed in, in um March of 2020. We made a point amongst ourselves that we couldn't do it alone and that we really need to advocate at the county and state level. So that's what I'm suggesting we do with MML. Thank you.
Um, anyone else have, Councilwoman Kostick, did you have a comment on this one?
Oh, um I just had, I have another proposed um amendment.
Alright, so do I have a second for the?
Let's have a second, this one.
Councilmember Kovar, are any other comments or thoughts?
Um I guess this question is for Councilmember um Smith. Are, are we limited in any way to the number of?
It's usually.
Should we stick to two or, or is it okay to have three?
It's usually three.
Okay.
But I, I want to go back, Councilmember Smith, to something you said last week to make sure I heard correctly in terms of thinking about, um given your experience in, on the Legislative Committee, and the context in which we are living in right now. Um it seemed to me that your recommendation last week was to go with the, the COVID-related one and the police-related one um and just push forward on that emphasis, but that's still be your recommendation?
That has not changed, but Councilmember uh Dibala did reach out to me and, and wanted to uh make an amendment uh to, to, for her proposal. Um I, I, I've just, going from my experience, I know that the Legislative Committee is going to be inundated with police reform issues and uh the pandemic, uh trying to, whether it's economic recovery or testing of residents. Uh I know those are the things that a lot of members of the Legislative Committee are going to discuss. Now, HUR, Highway Use Revenue, is always a big topic for the league. It's been out there forever. But the times that we're in, those are the two things that are going to be the biggest issues in the room when LARs are being discussed. Now, that does not mean that people aren't going to bring up other things. I'm not saying that, that's not the case. But the focus, I believe, most members of the committee will be on these two big areas.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, if I may. I understood, understood and agreed. Those, those are big issues this year. Uh I don't think that should stop us from saying that this is also a priority, it should be a priority. Um because they're not, they, because the Legislative Committee may not accept it, I'm not sure that's a reason to not propose it. Um since we are proposing the other two. Um I feel that it is, um it is a statewide priority for municipalities and should be discussed, should be considered. Um if MML does not embrace this, then we, we go on like we did last year and, and advocate for these on our own. Um but if this is a statewide issue, which I believe it is in the long run, I believe we should bring it up. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick.
Yeah, um I'm just wondering if, if there's any sense, since our first two um items here have a couple of bullet points under them, I'm wondering if there's any sense that we are already proposing a number more than two. I, I don't, that, that's my concern. Will people look at this and be like, gee, you're being kind of, you're overreaching a little in what you're proposing? Uh that's, and I don't know if that impacts the way the committee considers it or not, but uh Councilmember Smith, if you have thoughts on that, I'd, I'd be curious to hear.
Uh what I was trying to do was, was drive the conversation, not just have us have one or two areas where we're focusing on to give to the committee, right? It's a debate. So everybody has, everybody that is a, a member of the league has the opportunity to send in LARs, right? And the whole committee debates these LARs. Some die immediately. Others, if there is enough push, and I'm trying to provide almost like a Christmas tree, so we can garner support of some of the members on the committee for one or two of our proposed LARs. And you're exactly right. I didn't know it was that obvious, Councilmember Kostick, that I was trying to uh make it so that we had more of an opportunity to drive the conversation. But, you know, I think um a lot of times, the committee looks to certain jurisdictions and, you know, uh Tacoma Park is one of those, Gaithersburg, Rockville, Hyattsville, uh Bowie, uh Baltimore, if they're, want to participate. Uh so, you know, this gives us a, a, a chance to, to set the tone of the, the debate um at the committee level.
I might, uh Councilmember Smith, one of the things, years ago, we would be, we would give really simple, three things, you know, very, three very simple things. Uh and if it wasn't exactly what the Legislative Committee had in mind, it would just get thrown out. Once we were able and started putting more detailed information and options within a category, it could often be melded with somebody else's proposal because two of the items would fit and, and then it would get more strength. And so um it, it actually kind of works to have a variety of points under the items. Um and, you know, the staffer MML rewrites everything anyway. So it's, it just gives more language that, that you hope gives a little more force to our proposals.
And, and uh Ms. Braithwaite is exactly right. Uh during this debate, there might be one, a part of our proposal that people will like, uh and that will become part of the overall priority. So uh the more uh meat that you can give the committee, it helps uh in them formatting uh what is going to be the final proposal.
Okay. Um Councilmember Kovar and then Siemens.
Yes, um I think it makes sense to do three. I think adding climate is, is good. Um I don't personally see a major problem, number one, with having uh multiple items within each category. I mean, that's a classic way to get a little extra stuff in on, on each thing and maybe one component of what we suggest on, say, police reform or potentially climate change or um COVID might spark some interest when otherwise the rest of what we ask for on those things is similar to what everybody else asks for. But the other thing is, I, I recall the pa- the past few years, they would have these priorities and then they would have these strategic uh initiatives also, and it seemed like even MML was saying, well, you know, we got our two or three biggies, or maybe our one biggie if it was the transportation funding, but they actually found a way to do more than two or three also because they say, here are three legislative priorities and here are two, and I forget what they call them, other priority initiatives. So I, I think we should ask for three. And I think, given uh in particular what Councilmember Dibala said a- about how this is exactly what we said we were going to do in, in the framework. I mean, we talked in some of our other plans about, in housing plan also, about how an important component of it is advocacy at other levels of government. And, and I think this is, this is the opportunity. And, you know, if it doesn't get in this year, but people know that we asked for it, it could get in, in a future year. I, I think it's, it's a it's an issue in particular when you're talking about the um community choice. It has to be done at the state level or otherwise it can't happen. And so that's probably the single biggest thing, as I remember, that the consultants told us that could move the dial for us on, on the uh, on the climate framework that we adopted. And, and given that some of the other kinds of things that we probably hope to look at this year and later this year, we're not going to be able to, or they're going to take longer to get to because of COVID, I do, I would like to see us add this third one in.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Siemens, I think you're muted.
Ah, there you go, must be getting late in the evening. Um, I would first like to thank Councilmember Smith for his work on this. This is uh, uh an area where he really shines and all of his work with the Maryland Municipal League and, and most specifically with the legislative initiatives. Um and I trust his, uh, his judgment and also, uh, I know, I'm confident that, uh, you know, he's going to be working in the back rooms to uh try to get our initiatives in and get them supported. Um so I would uh defer to him, I'm comfortable, I think uh, I can't think of a year when we didn't put in three um initiatives, um so I'm comfortable with that. I, I really like um the way the, the one on the lease um is written up this year. I think it's uh powerful to have, you know, there's a lot of things that need to get done and I think by listing them in there, um that it uh increases the probability that it's going to get supported by other municipalities. So thank you.
Alright, um so let's do a, um if the clerk will call the roll, uh the vote on the amendment to include um Councilwoman Dibala's um whereas clause and um resolve clause.
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Sure. Um, alright, Councilwoman Kostick, you're up, you have another one.
Yeah, thank you. Um in the spirit of adding additional things to it, to get in as much as we can, um uh, there was a recommendation, um and, and issue flagged by Samara Cook Gaines, our Economic Development Manager, that um senior daycare providers in particular are not eligible for um some of the grants and other supports that childcare providers are eligible for. And um it, that, that might be something that we could, um it, it seems like that could be something that we should advocate for at the um, at the state level, since that probably impacts other communities as well. So um there's some language proposed here. Um I, I do think it's important to reference childcare as well because childcare is such a critical part of um the crisis right now and the, the challenges, particularly as students do not go back to school this fall um that will be faced. Um so my proposal is to um add this language as a third bullet point to the section we have up at the top, the, the first, um, the first, number one, the council urges MML to initiate or support legislation that bolsters the economy within Maryland municipalities by, and then add that um as a, um, as a third bullet point there. Um, and then I, relatedly, um I just, I think in the version I, I also sent around, too late to get posted, I think I also had um suggested a minor tweak that I don't recall exactly to the, um, I think it was uh to that, that first part, the council urges that, the MML to initiate or support legislation that bolsters the economy within Maryland municipalities and um supports Maryland residents by, just to, to clarify that it wasn't just about the economy, um but the, the larger workforce development and assistance to residents as well. So I move, if I can move those together, um or if it's better to move them separately, I can, I can do that as well.
It's fine.
Um that we add those.
Okay, do I have a second? Councilmember Cersei, second, okay. Any comments on these? Will the clerk call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar.
I, I just missed the second part of what um my colleague was talking about. I got the part about childcare and senior daycare and I support that, but I, I somehow didn't connect on the other piece, sorry.
Yeah, I, I was just in the very beginning of um that, that number one. Um Mayor, would you be able to scroll up?
I, this isn't, this is a different document because it's.
Oh, okay. Um yeah, sorry. Um in that number one, um where we have the list, it says the council urges the MML to initiate or support legislation that bolsters the economy within Maryland, Maryland municipalities by. I just suggested adding before the by, and supports Maryland residents. So it's not just about bolstering the economy, but providing supports to residents as well.
Alright, I vote aye.
Councilmember Kostick.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala. I'm out of order.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cersei.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Councilwoman Kostick, you have your hand up.
I did, I just, very briefly, as a closing comment, wanted to thank uh Councilmember Smith for your work on this. I think it's, it's really, um, a really strong recommendation coming out of the council this year and I really support it.
Thank you.
Did.
Will the clerk please call the vote on the resolution overall?
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostick.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Cersei.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Alright, that does it, oh, um, my apologies, so we're not going to vote on the um uh, the resolution authorizing to join the amicus brief because I realized it never got posted and sent around to council, um, we can do it next week and still, it'll be fine. Um so that will, will make sure everyone gets it and um we'll vote on it next week. So that means we'll move into our work session. The first item on the work session is term extensions for committee members. Um this is an emergency ordinance and am I going to, do I turn this over to the? This is an emergency ordinance and am I going to, do I turn this over to the?
I can do it. Good evening again, and, and thank you. The purpose of the uncodified emergency ordinance regarding extending the terms for members of the boards, commissions and committees is to make sure that those, the BCCs, if you will, have members through the end of June in 2021. As I understand it, the council has been, along with staff, has been working on, or prior to COVID-19, working on addressing various issues related to the boards, commissions and committees. That work has not been completed, and there's a desire to just put that on hold in the hopes of being able to return to it in the future. This ordinance is designed to be retroactive, encompass all of the boards, commissions and committees. And the retroactivity is to March 31st, which as I understand it, is the first date when the staggered boards, commissions and committees terms began to expire. And obviously, like many of these that we have done recently, you have the ability to rescind, modify or extend this ordinance in any way.
Anyone have any questions or comments, councilman Kostick?
Yeah, one of the, one of the committee members flagged for me that the grants committee was not a part of this list. Is that something that should be added here? It seems like.
Councilmember Kostick, this is Jessie. I think it was originally not included is because it is not, that committee is not included in the city code. The Grants Review Committee, it was established by resolution. But I, I think it should be included because there is a member whose term is expiring, expired on June 30th, that I believe wants to continue, and that would allow that to, this would allow that to happen.
Great. Yeah, I think it makes sense to me to add it if that's, if that is possible within the confines of, of the ordinance.
And, and if I could make a suggestion, just out of an abundance of caution i- in the event that we have other committees that are created in, in a fashion that's not in the ordinance. It may be wise to include general language to that effect so that we're not stuck with naming each one of them and inadvertently miss one.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Thank you. So does this do anything or change anything about who is on the leadership of these committees? Or is that just up to them to either continue or not continue that?
This does not address that. They would operate pursuant to whatever the code directs with respect to that or their own internal procedures.
Okay, and then I feel like we talked about this before, I'm sorry if you don't recall. Quorums, if, if some people decide they don't want to join and then it drops below the quorum? Or is it just a simple majority of whatever the number is?
Well, if, if they have their own individual procedures, if there's not one uniform set of procedures, that would be difficult to answer across the board. But as a general rule, you're going to go with a quorum of, of those present unless there is something specifically states they need to have a certain number of members in order to meet and proceed.
And then lastly, this, does this apply to some of these temporary task forces that we've established?
As far as I am aware of, it, it was not designed to apply to them. But I certainly welcome the city clerk's input on that. And, and obviously, if the council would like it to, I, I see no reason why it couldn't be applied to that.
So if, if I may say, the, I think there is one temporary, just only one task force thing at this time. And it is, the terms do not expire as long as the task force continues to exist. So I don't think it needs to.
There's parking, right? We didn't put an end date on it, is that right?
Right, there was a goal for it to complete its work by a certain point, but there's no, that, that would be kind of a different matter.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
Um, so I understand allowing for the extension, but does this in any way impact recruitment and allowing new, new members to join during the period of COVID, right? So I have a, I know a number of folks who are currently on different boards and committees and would like to phase out. So one concern is that, you know, if we're not actively allowing folks who are interested to join, to join, but we're only extending the people that are on the boards, like that could create instances where we don't have adequate representation across the city and, and a diverse committee over the course of the next year or so. So does, does, what we're talking about here, this emergency ordinance in any way prevents us from continuing to try to recruit new participants on the boards and committees?
What I would say is, as it's currently written, by continuing appointment of the current members, unless there's a vacancy, you would not be able to replace this. Unless there was a, I, I suppose you could through some form of special exception. But it's designed to keep the current members in place. Now, if there are vacancies, I, I can see no reason why you wouldn't be able to appoint new members under this.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful to just make sure that we can confirm that that's the case. And, you know, and I think this is a question for the city clerk in terms of, you know, what that process would entail. So like, for example, I know a ward six resident that's ready to retire off of the Committee for the Environment, and I have a ward six resident that is ready to join. And so I guess the question is, you know, how can we make sure, one, that my resident that's ready to phase out is not being faced with the idea of having to serve another year, or there's not going to be any representation? And then two, whether or not we can kind of strike while the iron's hot with those residents that are willing to join to kind of get them to go ahead and apply and get, get on boarded if needed.
One of the things to consider is that the, the process for making appointments has been flawed. And, and there's, I think, a desire to, to correct that somehow. So it's, it's a conversation that needs to be had. And I don't know if it can be, it probably can't happen tonight, and I don't know if it could happen next week. But the council does need to decide whether or not new appointments should continue to be made on an ad hoc basis. There are other committees that have, there are committees that have vacancies. And there's no formal decision made as to what should happen. And I thought there was a, a recommendation by the group who was looking at committees to not keep appointing members until the appointment process is improved.
In, in addition, there are some committees that have a lot of spots. And there was a desire to perhaps more standardize the size of committees. And so then there was also that discussion that maybe you don't want to fill the position if you're then going to downsize the committee by two people or something. So, so I think there's a lot of conversation that has to happen with, with council on those, on those specific cases.
Fortunately, as we're in, going into August, not much will be happening. So perhaps the mayor could schedule a discussion about this in September.
Yeah, I think we could, we could definitely do that in September. I think one of the main priorities is making sure that we, we are able to extend, given COVID and people's time on committees who want to. And as, as Wes just said, one, a number of the recommendations looking at the committees is to maybe standardize the size of the committees. And so we have some committees that have like 15 people and some who have five or seven. And if we kind of meet in the middle somewhere, how do you, you know, cut down on the number that has 15? If we keep recruiting people and they have three-year terms? So I do think it's a conversation that we're not going to have at 11:30 at night. So I, I would propose that we move forward with allowing the extension of people's time to serve on committees. So that way, for those who want to. And then I think we can come back to and look at, are we going to fill vacancies that don't necessarily need to be filled at this point?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the idea of prioritizing, you know, whether or not vacancies need to be filled. I would caution us and, and, you know, given COVID and all of the other things that are going on, that we don't want to also kind of wait to the point where we can't make decisions on onboarding or bringing on or recruiting because we could potentially have disparities as a result of some of the, some of the groups that are making decisions and making sure that they're not adequately representing, you know, either the diversity or the, you know, the ward representation may not be there. And yet they're still doing work for some prolonged period of time and making recommendations. So I do want to encourage us to prioritize. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly. Let's go ahead and extend folks because it's what we need to do. But I, I definitely think we need to prioritize reaching a resolution on the committee appointments and how we want to handle that because we don't want a lot of time to lapse in between.
Yep, no, I, I completely agree and on that point. And I think particularly looking at some of our committees, we definitely, and we, from the survey, we know our committees are not representative of our community right now. And we don't want to exasperate that situation. I also don't want to place people who have not served on a committee before into situations that we are not providing the support that we need, we know we need to do. Because we're not giving any training now. We're not, we're not doing onboarding. There, none of that exists. And so I think that's also a consideration as we're looking at the committees to make sure that if we are recruiting folks, that they also have a good experience and that we're supporting them. Cool, all right. So seeing that, I think we have a couple of things just to look at, if folks want to look at this again before it comes back for a vote next week to make sure it's clear that our intent here is to make sure we can extend the terms of people who are now serving, given COVID and everything else. And that we will return to the question of recruiting, of continuing to recruit members in September. And I'll ask the city clerk to remind me to schedule that in September. Because I'm not going to remember that in there right now. All right, let's see, moving on, our next. What's my agenda here? The next is resolution modify, modifying resolution 2020-12, which suspended the quasi judicial hearings. Everyone should have received a communication from our, our city attorney, providing some background on this. And I'll turn it over to him to provide some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as many of you may know, well, you certainly do know, but we, we suspended quasi judicial proceedings back when the COVID shutdown first began to occur. There were a number of reasons for that. The courts were shutting down. Additionally, we had issues with getting everyone up to speed simultaneously in terms of how to conduct these proceedings remotely. When I say issues, it just simply would not happen from a logistical standpoint. That has become more normalized, at least internally for certain staff members. We now have the, a limited ability to train certain boards, committees and commissions on a prioritized basis. And what I have attempted to do by crafting this particular resolution is track the concept set forth by the Maryland State Court System for their phased reopening. And they have created a schedule. Obviously, it's far more complex than, than, than what we're dealing with. But the goal would be to create a similar concept at the city manager level, identifying matters that need to be addressed on a more prioritized basis than others and, and, and phase in the training for the boards, commissions or committees that need to hear those matters. And that involves staff, legal support, the actual members, and at times even the other citizens, residents that may be participating. So that is the goal of this particular resolution. It also would provide the flexibility for the city manager to ramp up the phase in or scale it back depending on the circumstances in which we find ourselves as we roll into the fall and the increasing numbers that we're beginning to see even here in Maryland with the pandemic. And that is basically the gist of it.
If I may also follow up, part of the reason we've got an issue of people who are appealing a matter that involves Montgomery College before the tree commission. And, you know, right now, the quasi judicial hearings are suspended, but there is interest in having those hearings. We have had now given training to the tree commission so that can, they know how to work with the city attorney in a remote situation with the various parties. And so that's something that will be going forward next month. There's a couple other committees that have some, some matters that may come up and have a time sensitive matter, time sensitive issue. One of the things that this is kind of pegged to is, are the courts open if there is an appeal? And so far, the courts have been kind of slowly opening. I anticipate they're going to slowly, they're going to close up again and then open again some. And, and just recognizing that there's, that those are matters that would have to be followed is, is the point of this. So I will need to, under this resolution, establish a kind of a schedule for how that goes forward and the criteria and post it and advise people where that stands. And if it changes, then it's changing. I, I think it's particularly important over the course of your summer recess.
I'm muted, sorry. Thank you, councilman DeBala.
Yes, thank you. So I'm, I've been a little, my question is, this is to establish some quasi judicial proceedings in a virtual fashion, not, okay. So is that a little different from what the courts are doing? Phase in, or are they also phasing in and reopening, but it's virtual?
They're doing both. Depending on the nature of the circumstances. Obviously, there are certain things that they just have to do in person. Those are not, we don't have those in the city.
Okay, so we would, we, I, I'm going to suggest some slight rewording of a couple places to make that a little more clear. I might not be the only one who missed that point. When I first read it, I thought, oh, are we opening the city building just to have a tree commission hearing? And everybody's in six feet away from each other in a room. That's not what we mean here. So I think this is necessary. I think it's important. And I would just like to see the language a little more clear. And thank you for, for doing this.
Thank you. I, I will note that the, some of the logistics of showing evidence and, and kind of going through those things is, does take some special skill in a virtual setting, depending on the kind of evidence.
Any other?
Understood.
Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to. Everyone on the city staff, city managers, city clerk and our. City attorney for working on this. I know it wasn't easy thinking about the different things. So thank you very much. We are have one last item this evening and that is I'll turn it over to my colleague. The mayor pro tem, Councilmember Siemens, to discuss the youth council.
Hello. Yes, I'm sorry to be a little behind here. Good evening. Yeah, I'm trying to find my email.
That last discussion went faster than you thought.
Anyways, we have. Nominations for applicants for the youth council. For consideration and appointment. And. I was going to read the list, but I can't find it right now in front of me. Maybe someone else would like to read the list for me?
Sure, I think I have it here. We, so the council reviewed the applications and we are, sorry that not every young person who applied can be appointed. The applicants to be included on the appointment resolution next week are. Oh, and if I mispronounce anyone's name, I'm very sorry. It's very late, August. Van Skike from Ward One, Emmeline Brown from Ward Two, Dakota Rodriguez Pippins from Ward One, Xavier Ohana from Ward Two, Marusia Arumit, excuse me, from Ward Three, Diego Morales Gattica from Ward Six, Asha Henry, Ward Six, Eliza Van Camp, Ward Five, Aniqua Igua, Ward Five, Julia Manier, Ward Three, Noah Protas, Ward Four. And again, I apologize for.
Now you see why I couldn't find it.
I know. Now, now I see. You tricked me. That was on purpose. So. I just want to say thank you to all the young people and I think we have Asha's the only known person who's actually returning. So.
There is another Eliza Van Camp.
Oh, okay. Eliza's, oh, right. You're right. Yep. Correct. Yes. Councilman Dubala? We can't hear you.
That was my first question and that's the answer. There's two people returning. That's great. My second question was, is this the recommendations of the youth council that's going out that reviewed the applications? No.
The youth council didn't review the application.
Okay, so who's, who, how did, how did we get from sixteen to eight or whatever the number was?
Because we had an additional one in Ward Three. So Councilwoman Kostic reviewed, and I reviewed them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, that is all we have tonight. Next week is our last meeting before recess. We still have the second reading ordinance of the Tree. Ordinance and I second reading of the Tree ordinance, excuse me. And I would really ask people to review and if you have any changes that you need to be made to get in ahead of time. It is our second, I'm just going to say it's the second reading of this ordinance. We cannot be wordsmithing during our meeting. Everything needs to be in ahead of time. So Monday before noon, if you want to make a change, Monday before noon, get it in. And I, and we'll have some election stuff as well, but I just, on the tree ordinance, please, Monday before noon, any changes need to be in because I, we need the city attorney and our head of public works to review it. So that's the most important thing. And then we'll have our COVID-19 and we'll look at when we can schedule that as well as a number of other items. So thank you, everyone, and have a good evening. And we've done before midnight.